Well, it looks like we're right at six o'clock straight up, Sue. If you are ready, I think we hopefully are.
Let's roll.
Let's do it. All right. So this, uh, the city council work session for August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty is now called to order. A roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor, you're an L Holloman. I saw her just a minute ago. Elise? Okay, I think she's chasing. Uh, counselor Martinez Plankarte.
Present.
Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Uh, counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
And one more time, counselor, you're an L Holloman.
Ari here.
Okay, it's fine. We heard, uh, Lincoln, so.
All right. Um, all right. So we are, we are all present and accounted for. Uh, review of the council agenda and meeting any comments regarding the agenda for the business session. All right, hearing none. What about council business items to be added to the business session agenda? Again, hearing none. All right, we are moving into the topic of the work session this evening. Um, and that is, um, interviews for an appointment for district four counselor to, um, to replace or to, yes, to replace Patrick Johnson. Um, for a term that ends December thirty first of two thousand and twenty. Um, so we have, for those who might be listening, we have four candidates. Um, and they are Robert Bonner. I'll give you guys a brief introduction. You can introduce yourselves better after that, but, uh, uh, Robert Bonner, a retired professor from George Fox University, Dave Brown, a retired school district employee, Bryce Cofield, an administrator with George Fox University, and Greg Minahan with a history of administration in nonprofits. All right, so, um, gentlemen, you've all been, I believe, presented the questions prior to this. Um, we've, we've summarized them a little bit and condensed them a bit, um, just in the interest of time. So I'm hopeful that we will go and do this in rotating order and that, um, you all will have three minutes per question and there will be four questions each. So I think if that works out, that's just about forty-eight minutes or thereabouts. So, um, so, and Stephanie Finley, council president, will be, um, will be timing. So that's Stephanie in the red. Um, and she will be giving you the heads up once you've gotten to your time. So do be mindful, do be mindful of the time. Um, as we want to make sure everyone has a chance to, to answer all of the questions. All right, anybody, any questions or comments before we start? All right, all right. So hearing none. Um, question number one, we'll start in alphabetical order. So Mr. Bonner, that means you, um, tell us about yourself and why you're interested in serving as a counselor.
Sir.
I think we got unmute.
Might be muted. All right, all right, we'll start your clock again.
All right. I want to describe it in terms of two perspectives. One is my professional experience. The second is my volunteer experience. And the reason for that is approximately ten years ago, I started making a change in my attitude about how I looked at service. And so as we look at my history, I taught in the K twelve system for approximately twenty-six years. Fifteen of those years were primarily spent in the Forest Grove School District, teaching in Cornelius and Echo Shaw Elementarys, working with students who were second language learners, students with, from poverty, students who were immigrants. And then teaching those students, I was also in the regular classroom and special ed. I've got both of those credentials. And so I started to see what they needed, what the students needed. I started thinking about how do I prepare? Or how can I help prepare the stu-, the teachers who will be coming? So approximately eleven years ago, I began my career at George Fox University in the field of teacher education. Teacher education is preparing those elementary teachers. And as I began at George Fox, one of my major challenges was dealing with people who had wanted to be teachers, but who had challenges learning mathematics. So it was changing their attitude. It was finding new ways to create avenues for them. So twenty-six years of my life had been teaching either K twelve or at the university system. Approximately ten years ago, I saw the need to begin doing more service outside of the schools. And so at that time, I started looking at Habitat for Humanity, started volunteering at the restore. I also started looking at, uh, Yen Hill County Search and Rescue. And then the third piece, and I'm just going to share you a bit about it tonight, because I don't know if you've ever heard of it. And the third piece is Project Lifesaver. And what Project Lifesaver does, it helps those families who want to have their development delayed child, autistic child, Alzheimer's parent, or a person with dementia at home. Because what we do is prepare them in case they wander. For these four groups of people, wandering and getting lost is a major challenge. So what Project Lifesaver does, it equips each person with a transbi-, transmitter. That way, if they're lost, if they wander, if they run away, when search and rescue or when the sheriff is called out, we can usually find them within about fifteen minutes. And so as you look at what I've done.
Time's up. Thank you, Mr. Bonner.
I knew I was getting there.
Dave, I'll try that again. I was muted. Tell us about yourself and why you're interested in serving as a counselor.
No, thanks, Rick. Uh, I'm just gonna kinda do a little bit of bio. Um, I'm sixty-three years old. I've, uh, married with five children, raised my kids here in Newburgh. I attended, uh, Newburgh Public Schools, K through twelve, graduated nineteen seventy-five. I've, uh, been coaching in the Newburgh Athletics, uh, first youth. Last twenty years, I spent at Newburgh High School before retiring. And, uh, for, as far as Newburgh Public Schools, uh, fifty different seasons in tennis, basketball, football, as a, a paid coach, and then a ton of time as a volunteer. But I think my, uh, uh, my biggest thing is just my lifetime living in Newburgh. You know, I've seen Newburgh go from a town where, uh, if you got to Abbeys, you were out in the country back then. Um, you know, it's, it's a town that's grown, you know, so much in my lifetime. And, uh, you know, just, uh, have really enjoyed, um, serving the community. And, uh, I've spent the last year and two months on a Newburgh School Board. And, uh, you know, and the, the whole thing about the Newburgh, uh, City Council popped up, it was knowing so many people in town, you know, that work for you guys, that work for the police department, fire department in, in the city, I just really wanted to, uh, expand where I get to volunteer my time. And, uh, the city council seemed like a, uh, a place right now where Newburgh's really on that cusp of, of, you know, where we're going, we're getting bigger. And, uh, you know, that's kind of who I am as far as wanting to, uh, be here tonight and talk to you guys. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
I did it again. I would try that again. Bryce, tell us about yourself and why you're interested in serving as a counselor.
Yes, hello. Good evening, uh, everyone. My name is Bryce Cofield. Um, and as I think about these questions of who I am and why I'm interested, especially who I am, there are, there are three areas. One, I could respond relationally. Um, I am a father of an incredibly adorable child. His name is Kyrie. You might have seen him around. He loves laughing and playing with folks, um, a husband, a scholar, I'm currently a PhD candidate studying higher education at Azusa Pacific University. Um, but more than relationally, um, I think who I'd hope people would know me to be, uh, someone who's joyful. Um, I try to choose joy, uh, when I can, um, which can be hard at times, you know, given what we know is our, our current circumstance and what's been there. Um, and there's this idea, um, that comes from the Zulu tribe of Sawa Bona as a greeting, right? Some folks know Sawa Bona means I see you, or perhaps even more importantly, um, you are important to me. I value you. Um, and to me, I would like to be known as someone who sees people. I think there's a lot, uh, that makes it difficult to truly see people, whether it's the preconceived notions that we believe them to be, whether it's dominant narratives that would have us believe that based off of, um, our immediate glance of who they are, we know them. I think it's hard to see people. And so and imagine why I'm interested in serving as a council. My sense is that this is an opportunity, um, to really begin, um, to see and engage the Newburgh community. I moved here three years ago. Um, and my sense is that this is, um, a group who seeks to serve community well. Um, if I'm honest, my initial response to someone who asked if I'd be interested in, in applying for this position was no. I have a lot going on. I'm finishing, like I said, a PhD and dissertation phase. I have a wonderful child and family. I work at George Fox. Um, and ultimately, it's been folks, um, that I live in community with, who see me, who I have the opportunity to see and belong to, who have come around me and said, this is how, um, you can serve the community. We believe in you and believe in your voice. And so that would be my hope and interest is to be, um, a voice as well as to be, um, a person who can see the community and serve the community well. Thank you.
Bryce, thank you. All right, Greg, uh, same question. Tell us about yourself and why you're interested in serving as a counselor.
Sure. I've lived here in Newburgh since, uh, nineteen ninety-seven. I, I, I remember the, the population sign at that time said sixteen thousand and change. And so I've watched quite a few city councils, uh, uh, go through the, the turn and, and seen a lot of work done over that period of time. I've lived here longer than I've lived any place. Um, and, um, you, if you've read my, my resume, my career's been spent in, in nonprofit and, and it seems that when I'm not working in nonprofit, I'm volunteering for, for some nonprofit. I've served on the boards of, um, Edison High School. That's a school for kids with learning disabilities. Um, I have, uh, I'm currently, uh, on the library foundation board. Uh, Opal Creek Ancient Forest is one of my favorite places. I served on that board for several terms. Um, and I guess what, what, one of the reasons that I'm, um, motivated to throw my hat in the ring here is I, I really see the, the power of, uh, when people come together, uh, for a common cause, for a common reason with shared goals. And, um, and, and I've experienced that in, in many different fronts. Uh, I have extensive experience in social services. And so what, what I did in my professional life very often was develop private public partnerships to solve significant community problems like violence, like, uh, transition programs for offenders, uh, alcohol and drug treatment programs. Um, of course, I'm very familiar with things, uh, to do with education and, and, and special education through my experience at Thomas Edison High School. And, and so despite having diverse values, uh, amongst the community and diverse opinions about how things, uh, should be accomplished, I've managed to help bring people together and, uh, and, and I think I've primarily done that, um, really through the power of listening and, and, and quite frankly, a little bit like what Bryce was talking about, really seeing people. Not, you know, I think I have a power to suspend judgment and, and, and just hear things as they are and, uh, and ask, uh, good questions. So, um, so that's, that's it.
Great. Well, thank you. All right. Uh, moving on to question number two. Um, and again, we'll change the order this time. What is your understanding of the role of a counselor and the time commitment? Given this, what has prepared you to be a counselor? And Dave, it looks like you'll start this one off.
Um, I looked at, you know, everything, uh, the, the packet, and one thing that was impressive was how well put together the city council is as far as being organized and, and the different revisions. So, um, I think what's prepared me is, uh, you know, last fourteen months, you know, going through all the, uh, stuff with the school board, um, it's been started pretty easy and it's gotten more difficult. But I would say all my work within the, in the public system in Newburgh and working with so many different kinds of people and, um, more so than as a coach, I spend a lot of my time counseling. And I think that the, uh, you know, thing that prepares in, in here is, is what Greg just said, listening really well. And I think that that's one of the things I've heard out in the public. A lot is, you know, they, they, they want people in the, in the, the public, uh, jobs to, to listen to them. And I, I think what I can do too is go out and get people to maybe come in and speak to us instead of just being frustrated, uh, back where, you know, they're living in their home. And, uh, you know, we're a big enough town now where a lot of people feel like they can't make a difference. They can't make a change. So they don't say anything and then it just lets it fester and they get frustrated. And I, I think for uh, the ability just to, to sit down with people, talk about it and, and bring them to the table so they can come to the city. And there's a lot of great a- ideas out there, you know, young, uh, the family people, the older people. And, uh, I feel like I can bridge all those different, uh, areas. Sometimes just through the relationships to live in here so long, and then sometimes just being in education where you know people where the, the families are younger. Sitting through lots and lots of school meetings, uh, kind of prepares you for the whole, uh, process of being patient and, and, and letting the pace, uh, come to you. Uh, I think that would be important for the city. Uh, as you guys tackle lots of different, uh, uh, you know, sections of our community with, um, you know, the public works to the, the police, to the library. There's so many, you know, such a diversity there. So, um, again, just, uh, I think being around the community for so long to be able to, to hear so many different voices, would be something I'd like to bring all those voices to, to you guys and to the council and to you, Rick, the mayor. So, there you go.
Thank you, Dave. All right, Bryce, same question. What is your understanding of the role of a counselor and the time commitment? Given this, what has prepared you to be a counselor?
Thank you again. Role, time commitment and preparation. So role, um, as, as far as I understand it, um, is quite complex and potentially unique. So, um, from, you know, the best I can understand, you all primarily serve in legislative ways as well as administrative ways and quasi judicial, uh, sense of, of authority, which I'd be curious to hear more of, of how that plays out. It sounds quite interesting. Um, my sense is that you carry out these three areas primarily through ordinances, um, through resolu-, I'm sorry, yeah, through ordinances, um, through resolutions. Um, and then I'm forgetting what the third is. I will have to find it. Um, all in all, though, from what I've heard, um, you all have a really big responsibility around budget. That takes a lot of time, providing vision and direction for the city counselor Dan, um, as he, um, seeks to carry out, uh, what that vision is with supervisory, uh, responsibilities over the city attorney as well, without getting in the, in the way, but providing, again, direction. In terms of time commitment, um, I've spoken to Kernswell's previous counselors. My sense is that y'all do a lot of reading. Um, I've heard it's upwards of a hundred fifty, two hundred pages every two weeks. Um, however, sometimes, um, that chunk um, is seen later on, right? And so it's about doing the work to read, obviously meet a couple of times a month um, and serve on committee meetings as well. Um, so my sense is it's a lot of time, um, serving. In terms of what has prepared me, I mentioned, um, I am a scholar, currently a PhD program, so I read a lot. Um, admittedly, can be a slow reader at times, but I think I read deeply. Um, and I try to be thoughtful and critical with what I read. Um, I've also, um, been trained to be, um, someone who asks a lot of questions. And I think that's something that I hope would prepare me well as I step into a role where inevitably, as much as I think I know or what other folks have told me, there's, um, a learning curve. And so my, my hope would be that, uh, through being able to ask good, deep questions um, and bring an open posture of learning, um, that I can do this, this role well.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Greg, then same question. What is your understanding of the role of a counselor and the time commitment? Given this, what has prepared you to be a counselor?
Yes, uh, similar to what Bryce was saying, you know, there's the legislative role that impacts the municipal codes, um, the administrative rule, uh, role for maybe approving things like contracts over fifty K, I believe is the, is the limit there. Um, and then that, uh, exif-, and then that, uh, quasi judicial role that, um, of, uh, you know, which I think comes into play around nuisance abatement perhaps and, and, uh, historical designation, things like that. I, I also believe that there is, um, there's an ex officio role on the, the budget committee. I, I believe all the counselors, uh, sit on the budget committee. Is that correct? Yes, thanks, Stephanie. And, uh, and I believe, um, counselors also pick another committee to uh, sit on as well, but, but, uh, I, I know that many do, uh, sit on, uh, the budget as well as another committee. Um, so I'm thinking this is two or three meetings a month. Um, and I'm thinking it's probably about five or six hours a week in terms of preparing for, for said meetings. I, you know, what's prepared me to do this? Um, I'm very familiar with Robert's Rules of Order. I've been in many, many board meetings. I've run many, many board meetings and, um, uh, so I'm, I'm quite comfortable in those settings. Um, I'm, I'm also the, um, I'm a board member at large of our homeowners association. So again, familiar with the public comment and, and sort of that's a, if that's not a thankless task, I don't know what is. Um, but, uh, and then I think really what's prepared me mostly is just sort of the, 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 my nonprofit experience, uh, that just ranges, I, I, I told you, some of the things, domestic violence is, is some. Uh, but also frail and elderly. For instance, I actually ran a couple adult day centers for a couple of years. Uh, that's a particular interest of me, uh, for me and, um, I, you know, I, I think just, uh, really it's, it's, it's kind of a, a life of service that I have and, and, um, uh, and, and the, the primary reason that I threw my hat in the ring here was, was to really give the counselors, um, an additional, additional choice. I just wanted to make sure that there was some good candidates and, and clearly there are several good candidates here. So, so, um, perhaps you didn't need me to do that, but, uh, um, I, uh, I think I've, I've been in many, um, you know, it, spent a lot of time in Portland. Is that it? My time's done? Okay. Um, I'm, I'm, would be looking forward to, uh, sort of bringing some of those skills home and, uh, and, and expressing them here in, in the town where I live is, is kind of the, the objective.
All right, Greg, thank you. All right, Robert, same question. What is your understanding of the role of, of a counselor and the time commitment? Given this, what has prepared you to be a counselor?
My fellow candidates have talked a lot about the legislative aspect of the city council. But I want to expand that role. I want the city council, and this is my vision. The city council in a sense is, are the leaders of the city. Not only are you setting the priorities for the city offices, but you're also saying the priorities, this is what we want to accomplish in our city. A second piece of that is that a couns-, as a counselor, we are actually servants of the city. We're volunteers, but we're servants of the city. Our purpose on the city council is to weigh multiple options, competing options, and then choose the one that we think is best for our community. Sometimes that means we have to turn aside our own opinions, but we choose the one that is best. As you look at my experience, perhaps the best way to describe it is it has given me a deep understanding of culture. And by culture, I'm not just referring to the clothes we wear. I'm talking about how do we make decisions? How do we communicate? What are our priorities? What are our values? As we look at the citizens of Newburgh, we do not have a monolithic culture. Even if you look among the white citizens, citizens, it's not monolithic. If you look at among the Hispanic, it's not a monolithic. And as we think about those citizens, as we think about our communication, our decisions, we have to take into account those cultural differences. What will work for one group will not necessarily work for another group. And so as I'm looking at, thank you, as I'm looking at the time commitment, I'm seeing it starts at five to ten hours a week and increases. Now, what my experience besides the culture piece brings to the city council is the idea of critical thinking. Others have all mentioned questioning. It is essential that we ask the right questions. Because we, as you look at the goals coming up, there are some crucial goals. How are we going, how are we going to measure them? How are we going to define them? And above all, as I look at my work on the communit-, on the city council, we are a community. We are a council together, making decisions. It's not just one person, it's the whole council. That's what I bring.
All right. Um, thank you. Thank you, Robert. All right. Uh, yeah, that was a great segue to the goals, which happens to be the next question. All right. So the council adopted, uh, five goals and Bryce, so you will go first on this one. Uh, the council adopted five goals for two thousand and twenty, and I will summarize them here. Uh, customer service and to resolve ongoing legal disputes. Uh, a, a, a operational culture that cherishes diversity, equity and inclusion, development of, uh, housing affordability, create an urban renewal plan and authority, and, uh, collaborate with local partners for a sustainability program. So the question is this, how, explain how you will promote these goals. And, uh, Bryce, you're up.
Great question. How might I promote these goals? I think the first, like I said in my previous question, is to come in with a posture of learning. Um, I think it's deeply problematic when people coming in, when people come in thinking they know, uh, the answers to questions that people aren't even necessarily asking. So I would first want to come and say, um, what were the processes that went into place to establish these goals? What are the, um, maybe intended outcomes? And ultimately, to what degree has there been a community sort of speaking into these goals? Uh, which as far as I've heard from talking to folks, it has been quite a bit of community. So I would commend the council for these goals. Um, there are a lot of, I feel like a lot of really cool ways to do these goals. I actually see them intersecting quite a bit. Um, I'm drawn, uh, I will admit to the second one, which is talking about diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, my entire career working higher education has been explicitly, um, in diversity, equity, inclusion. Um, and this is something that I'm incredibly passionate about. And like I said, I see intersecting with affordability, with houselessness, with transitional housing, um, de- developing right urban renewal plans, collaborating with local partners. All of these things are, are connected. Um, and so, yes, when I'd imagine what it would mean to carry out those goals, like I mentioned before, I think it's listening, um, just to hear from the voices of community members. Uh, what would they like to see? Creating buy-in. Um, assuming again, a, a posture of humility, knowing that what I might intend to do to meet these goals may have an unintended impact that does harm. So have enough humility to say, I messed up or we messed up. How do we do better? Um, how do we recognize the limited nature that we have because of our lived experiences and our embodied knowledge? Folks carry a wealth of embodied knowledge. And so I think the degree to which we can be humble and listen to others, um, will dictate how successful we can be in carrying out these plans.
All right, Bryce, thank you very much. All right, uh, next, Greg. Um, so council adopted five goals and in summary, they are customer service, that, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion, housing affordability, urban renewal and sustainability. Explain how you will promote these goals.
Um, so the first two goals, it, uh, that looks like it's, it, it's really, it, up to the city manager to, to execute on the direction of the city council. So in those situations, it seems like the city council has sort of set the direction. Um, and I would be curious to know what the key performance indicators are for those goals. And, and I would sort of need to know that before knowing, you know, how I could maybe individually as a counselor support those two. Promote development of housing affordability. Um, uh, I've actually done some work in affordable housing in my role as chief operating officer at Volunteers of America. And I'm I'm keenly aware of the wraparound services that may be necessary in order to sustain successful affordable housing. But also, there's a there's a lot here that I really don't know. I mean, I I don't know what the housing stock is in Portland in terms of how much workforce housing is there? How much affordable housing is there? And 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 I'm not fully aware, other than sort of the the municipal codes around zoning, how the city council can potentially support that particular thing. Around, let's see, the urban renewal plan. I've actually had a long-term interest in urban renewal, and I've read quite a bit about urban renewal, both both the the beautiful as well as the ugly that that we know is is part of the urban renewal history. And so I'm very interested to to play a role in that and to ensure that the absolute best outcomes could could potentially come from an urban renewal district. And in regarding that urban renewal district, I really think what we're talking about here is setting sort of the preconditions for success. And and that's really what we want to do is make some key investments there that that help other investment come in and really developed, you know, the areas of Portland in in a way that meets the city needs. And then sustainability, I'm a sustainability professional. I've worked the last four years in in sustainability, corporate sustainability. And so I I have quite a bit. I'm very familiar with I C L E I and 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 many others. You know, the the main pillars of sustainability, economic sustainability, social sustainability, environmental sustainability. So I'm I'm well, well grounded in in the terms of sustainability, and I think I could bring some good experience to the conversation.
All right, thank you, Robert. Again, same question. So the goals, five goals for 2020, customer service, D E I, housing affordability, urban renewal and sustainability. Explain how you will promote these goals.
As I look at the five goals, I try and make connections between ideas. And so as I looked at the five goals, what I saw was this. Your fifth goal talks about a sustainable community. I want to expand that idea of sustainability to include economic, housing, environmental, social. So in other words, I'm expanding the idea of Newburgh being a sustainable society, a sustainable community to include everything that you've talked about in goals one through four. As you look at goals one and two, there we're looking at a culture. Culture change cannot be mandated, but it can be influenced. A key part of influencing that culture is the idea of people listening to one another. Right now, as we think about the situation involving Black Lives Matter and police officers, we have this big divide. How can we bring them together to listen? In Newburgh, that means as we think about the police reform or any police decisions, we begin listening not only to the police officer, but also and have them listen to the people of the community, what's going on? And so as I look at that facilitation, we're encouraging people to talk, to discuss. And here it's crucial that it's a non-threatening situation. Because if it's threatening, it won't. Then we look at housing. More almost fifty percent of those who are homeless in the county of Yamhill are under the age of eighteen. That's a tremendous challenge. That affects their schooling, that affects their learning, that affects where their future. And so as we look at housing, being an advocate for housing means we're looking for solutions. We're looking for opportunities, whether it's partnering with Habitat for Humanity, building tiny homes, revising the zoning standards as you did years ago as a council. We're looking there. And then the last one, as you think about urban renewal, how do we develop that urban renewal so it sustains Newburgh as a community? Not just in terms of business, but in terms of family, in terms of life, in terms of houses. So what I bring is looking at things from a systemic viewpoint. How do these influence and relate to one another? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Same question. So council adopted five goals for 2020, customer service, D E I, housing affordability, urban renewal and sustainability. Explain how you will promote these goals.
You know, I looked at all five of those and you know, they're they're good goals. Every one of them's, you know, solid. So good job. I, you know, I did pick out my one I was most passionate about. I'll save that for the end. I I really believe that I've spent most of my life in customer service, which I kind of think hits on all these. I'm going to change my my tactic a little bit here, though, is being in town longer than most of you guys. You know, I I've heard and seen all the different things that have come down the pipe from council getting criticized, mayor getting criticized, all the the different things that have happened. And I think customer service and building relationships up in our communities is critical. And and Newburgh is is Newburgh, you know, we're not anywhere else, you know, and we need to listen, which is one of the key components of customer service. And I I think we have to get out there and and reach everybody. And whether or not they own a a big fancy home or they're renting, we need to listen to everybody. And I so I think it's going to be really important that the city council has a a very balanced, broad view of that. And I think that's what I would like to bring to the city council is bring a lot of people through the door that would sit down with with you all and talk. And when it when it comes to hitting all these goals, making sure that every single person that that lives in Newburgh is treated just as well as anybody else. When we look at the you know, the the different things about the renewal, you know, plan and where we're going with our city, what are we doing in our town that's really what the people in Newburgh want? You know, do they want us growing all the way to Dundee? Or do they want us to stop? Are we gonna are we gonna cow down to big, you know, builders? Or how far are we going to move this thing out? And I I really think that we can get a lot of people excited, which is what I think the city councils should do, is to get a lot of people and a lot of voices going. And that's what I would bring to you guys. I would get a lot of people in meetings with you guys to sit down and talk about it. The one I was most passionate about, I mean, they're all good. There wouldn't be a wrong one here, but it was promote and development, housing affordability. I think that if if you're renting and or owning, I've done both. And I I think it's so important for our families in this town to feel like they belong in Newburgh. And and having a home and a solid place to live is is one of the most basic, critical things we can do for our people. And I think there's a lot of really creative things we could do in our town to put out affordable housing out there. That doesn't have to be cheap housing. It can be nice housing with with great landscaping, all those kind of things. And I don't think we should settle for less for anybody. And I think the affordable housing to me is is something that every family needs. And it it was that way, you guys in the sixties when I grew up here, and it's the same way now. You know, there's both sides of the tracks. And I would like to see a more balanced thing there so people could feel really important where they live in Newburgh. So they're all five great goals.
Thank you. All right, question number four, and we'll start start with Greg. Describe one thing in relation to these goals that you see going well in Newburgh and one thing you would like to see improve.
I think the the urban renewal plan is is it's a very impressive piece of work. And a little bit, the urban renewal piece of it is almost like the tip of the iceberg. And 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 what's underneath that, supporting that, of course, is the is the riverfront plan, the downtown plan, the Newburgh visioning, and all of these entities that came together to get community input, to get community context and and really to have, you know, the leaders of our community vision what they wanted to see in this area. So so to me, all of that work, all of those committees, all of that visioning that went on is significant and powerful. And and would love to see that expressed in 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 reality with some some real building. And of course, to to make anything happen, you need some monies. So the urban renewal as as a as a tool to to make that happen, I think, is is one of the great things happening in the city. Things that I'd like to see improved, you know, I I gotta say that I don't I don't have a I don't have enough working knowledge of of what's going on at the city to really be a critic in that way. The city has always served my needs and and and, you know, probably, you know, probably one of my main concerns, you know, and and one of the motivations for being on this is, you know, I I did see a period of time where the city council did not make the necessary investments that were necessary in in the water department, for instance. And and the reasoning behind that was a sort of a no tax, low tax kind of value. And I I respect that very much. But at the same time, the result of that was bigger tax, more expensive, just further down the road. And so so this idea of being able to plan thoughtfully and to make the necessary and smart investments now in order to minimize the need for for raising taxes and fees in the future is key. And so this is smart government, and and I think I could lend a hand in that conversation.
Great. All right, Robert, same question. Describe one thing in relation to these goals that you see going well in Newburgh and one thing you would like to see improved.
Putting something down to one is hard. Because as I'm looking at this, what I'm excited about are two. For example, as you look at the second and third goals, in one sense, they are very much related. Because as we think about equity, inclusion, diversity, that means we're creating a culture where everyone is accepted. Whereas, you know, if we have a minority member walk into a store, they're not immediately ostracized or immediately put under block, under close watch. But we try, help our people, help our citizens, help our officers, our business people to see that each person is unique. Thank you. Each person is special. We recognize that inclusion, that diversity. And tying that in with homelessness is think about how often we go through town and we see a homeless person. What do we do? Are we driving through town with blinders on? We don't see them? Or do we recognize they're homeless? See, part of the challenge with homelessness is we have to find ways to include them in the process too. Are those who are in treacherous snow housing? Are those where you have two families living in the same household? So as I'm looking at this, the setting second and third goals, you started the process. You've said, here's where we want to go. Now here's the difficulty. Here's the challenge. The challenge is, how are you going to get there? And how are you going to know when you get there? For example, if we set a numeric goal, oh, we're gonna have four people hired by the end of 2020, that really doesn't say much about changing the culture. All that says is we hired four people. So as we look at the culture concerning homelessness, inclusion, equity, diversity, not only do we have to identify the problem, we have to find solutions. And so as I look at the challenge for the city council, is how do we know when we've accomplished what we want to be? And so it looks good. You got a good start. How are we going to know when we get there?
All right, Dave, same question. Describe one thing in relation to these goals that you see going well in Newburgh and one thing you would like to see improve.
You know, I think one thing is going really well in Newburgh is you know, we have a perfect community to have a perfect community, as close as you can be. We have a big enough community. We have dollars in this community. We have a college in this community. We have really good schools in this community. We have a lot of different kinds of people here for different jobs, some local, some not. We have ADEC, we have the wine industry, we have the agriculture industry. We have a lot of great things that that we just have to 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 tap into and take advantage of. And a lot of those people want to help. I think that's what's going really well. We have a lot of options to make things great in Newburgh. You might not all like hearing this one, but I think the thing we need to, that I would like to see done better is when I've been on the community, I've heard all the negative comments about the mayor, the city council, the the water department, the public works. I've heard all that stuff, and I'm going to pick on Rick right now, just because I know Rick through coaching. I hear that stuff. I hear it about rugby. I hear it about being the mayor of Newburgh. And I try to always get to people and say, hey, whoa, 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 you don't know this guy. Take the time to sit down with him and get to know him. And and whether it's our attorney, you know, lawyer Stone, or whoever it is in our community that that people are going after, that's what I want to help work on. I can sit down with all the people I know in the public works, in the fire department, in the police department. I know Rick and I don't know a lot of you guys, but that's what I would like to see improved is being able to be straight up and talk about the things that people are taking shots at and quit getting into all the negative and let's let's just take Newburgh where it should go. We have so much here to work on. We have so much to work with. And that's where I'd really like to see Newburgh go. And I it's tough to be city council and and not you know, I think getting out there and really hearing what everybody's got to say so they can help you do your job. That would be my biggest thing. And so people can maybe get off your back a little bit and help you out a little bit.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dave. All right, Bryce, same question. Describe one thing in relation to these goals that you see going well in Newburgh and one thing you would like to see improved.
Yeah, thank you. Perhaps ironically, it's the same goal for both. My answer is both, and it surrounds number two. And in terms of what I see going well, I mean, the fact that there is an explicit goal that talks about diversity, equity, inclusion, and again, my guess is there are some very intelligent, thoughtful people on this council who understand that diversity, equity, inclusion aren't all the same things and are hard and are probably going to make a couple of people upset when, you know, equity feels potentially unfair. So so the fact that that's a goal to me speaks to the the thoughtfulness of this of this council and folks that have spoken into these goals. I've seen and heard and specifically, so you know, if Dave says he'll pick on Rick, I'll pick on Rick too. I have had the opportunity to to serve the Shalem Shalem Cultural Center around MLK Day. And I remember this last year in particular, Rick, I don't know if you remember, you stood up and you were very transparent around a lot of pain that the city has gone through, particularly around diversity, equity, inclusion. And admittedly, as a black identifying black man, I was sitting here to see who is this mayor? Who is this man whose council would claim divided diversity and how would they respond? And I was encouraged to hear your honesty as well as a commitment to do better. One of my favorite quotes is from Dr. Maya Angelou, who said, I did then what I knew what to do. And now that I know better, I do better. And my sense is that the council has done their best as they knew what to do and is in striving to know better and to do better. And so that would lead to my second part around improvement is that we would continue to listen to the voices of the community so that we may begin to know better and ultimately do better, right, as a council and as a community. And my hope is that I can help us continue to improve in that way.
Right. Well, thank you very much. So folks, that's that is the end of the prepared questions. It looks like we've got a couple more minutes, and why don't we go around back to the original alpha order? If you have any questions for us. So Robert, that that's you first.
Rick, why do you pick on me first?
You know, it's the last name thing. Sorry about that, Robert.
Oh, I know. As as a city council, what would you see as your greatest challenge?
All right, who wants to take that one, folks? All right, who wants to take that one, folks? Stephanie is reaching.
I was reaching. So there are a lot of challenges, but I would say one of the biggest challenges for me is that you really have to get into the mindset that we are making decisions, but we are making decisions as a body of seven people. And we all have different ideas and different passions and different ways that we want to do things. But ultimately, those decisions all need to be made as a body of seven people and really kind of digging into really having honest conversations with one another about those things, but ultimately standing by the decision of this group as a whole. And that's definitely a challenge coming from other places where you sort of get to wiggle in and make some decisions on your own. It really is a collaborative effort. And so as from the time you were in kindergarten, working in a group can always be tough.
All right, Eddie, what do you want to add anything to that? All right, well stated, Stephanie. That is true. All right, Dave, any any questions for the council?
Yeah, I guess my question you guys would be. You know, I do appreciate all the time you guys put in. I know there's a lot of a time. I guess my question is for you guys is, you know, you got your five goals here. I think all five, I think only talking about one is a mistake. So are you interested in doing all five? Or or are you just focused on one goal?
Who wants to tackle that one? Anyone? All right. Oh, there we go, Denise.
Dave, we're working on all of them at the same time. Unfortunately, we only meet every two weeks or twice a month. And so we're we're getting like targeted and we those goals are big words. Big words. And they mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Like the few of you have mentioned, I'm a big sustainability, but you know, the three, right? The big three, not just the environment. So so actually being able to tell our staff, because poor Dan wasn't even here when we had that conversation. So he doesn't even know you know, where it came from. So he's got to go, we have to go back and redefine them because we're not even sure we're all on the same page. So we have to define them for our staff first. And that happened like January 19th, where those those goals came out. And we're slowly working our way into the clear definition that staff can really follow through with.
Thank you.
Also, anything to add to that? All right, Bryce, what do you? What do you think? Any any questions for council?
I have a question, although it is not for council. My understanding is that the council oversees both the city attorney as well as the city manager who are on this call. Is that correct? Awesome. I would love to hear from both of you or or one of you. What is it that you need from a city councillor so that you can be successful at your job? My understanding is that we exist to allow you to do good work. So what do you need from a city council so that you may be able to do good work?
I'm gonna assume that Truman's gonna plead the fifth as good attorney would. So I'm Dan Weinheimer. I'm the city manager as of end of February. So I did miss the goal setting. I think for speaking for staff and for the the time that I've had work with the staff that we have, it really is a lot about you know, clarity, I would say, and and trying to to dive into some of these questions like Denise spoke to that we are really skilled at doing the day to day work and doing the same thing over and over again won't get you down the path to new anything. And so trying to stretch ourselves, but it's hard to do that with a limited amount of time and resources. And so clarity as much as possible from council and ongoing discussion around items, because I I think clarity is only a finite thing and and will evolve over time. So, you know, just being able to to ask those questions, give us your your ideas at the moment and and some positive, negative feedback, whatever it takes to kind of get down the path. So I think I think that's the ideal for a councillor.
Truman, are you gonna indeed plead the fifth?
I would echo what the city manager said. I I think some clarity on direction. I think, you know, the council goes through the process of setting goals. The the staff will implement whatever goals the council sets. Some of the difficulty we've had in the past is the council sets goals and the staff starts to try to address those goals. And then the council adds additional things on that distract us from accomplishing the goals that the council gave us at the beginning. So some clear direction and some patience to get those those goals actually implemented.
Thank you. All right, Greg, anything for council or staff? Or you can ask, you can ask Lincoln there too. He's our he's our junior staff member. There's his foot. You can ask any question you like.
Well, I I I reviewed the budget and I was really pleased to see that it looks like the budget was created, you know, pre with COVID in mind, you know, with the with the expectation of reduced revenues coming in. And and the question is, do you fit? Have you? Are you looking at this budget in terms of sort of worst case scenario planning? I mean, the 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 budget did seem to take into account, you know, reduced economic activity. But at the same time, there's a huge unknown in what we're dealing with here. Never before has the entire world stopped like this before. And, you know, and and just looking into the public sector, you know, you're you're beginning to see, you know, issues with, you know, with everything, education and all the public positions, there's going to just be a pretty big rollback as we move forward. And so I'm just curious about a, is there, you know, or sort of what is the plan for readdressing budgets in in term if if revenues do fail to meet expectations?
All right, who wants to take that? Does that one we serve up to staff, Dan? Is that we're all not?
Your authorship, wasn't it on that budget?
It was a team effort by for sure. It was definitely not my authorship. I think I I put the first few words together, but definitely staff put the majority of it together. It was a budget crafted with COVID on the in mind and and with some level of the expectations of COVID. You know, not full clarity, I don't think, in terms of the longevity of COVID. But with the expectation, we would look at the budget again in six months after its passage. And so try to reevaluate at that point. You know, we we typically monitor our revenues and and, you know, just try to keep an eye on those things. You know, some level of concern around, you know, the TLT in particular, the transient launching tax and how important that is to our budget that COVID is going to have and continue to have or has had and will continue to have a negative impact on people's ability to travel and to their willingness to stay in hotels and and to, you know, do tourism as we knew it. And so I think, you know, stay tuned, I guess, to this council meeting. Later on in the business session, we'll get an update from from Taste Newburgh. But at some level also, you know, we've continued to to monitor activity financially, but also spending. And so, you know, trying to to keep an eye on hiring and keeping an eye on, you know, just any any expense that we have. I think we'll we'll definitely take another look at some point soon, but six months is sort of what we committed to initially.
All right, thank you. It's it's you took, I'm trying to remember, the it was almost the revenue was almost zeroed out in in that tax. I think you had what about 80,000 or 85,000 there?
Yeah, we zeroed out a couple quarters, I think, actually. So yeah, we were pretty, what I hope was conservative and maybe not prescient, but we'll see.
All right. Well, amazingly enough, it is 6:59. So I will tell you what, gentlemen, if that shows nothing else, it shows your efficiency. I I can tell you really honestly, Robert and Dave and Bryce and Greg, I've been bragging like for the last two or three weeks on the candidates and the number of candidates we get to take on this thankless job. And I cannot thank you enough for doing it. All right, now that's the thank you. Now here comes the catch. Unfortunately, only one of you can be selected. I'm sorry about that. So but that does not mean that that is the last of your chance to work with the city of Newburgh. We often have committees that are looking for people with just your types of talents. So please do not forget us. And again, really, we cannot thank you enough. Just just by being here, you show how much you care about this community. And that speaks budget, that speaks volumes. Sue just gave me the note saying we are looking for people for the budget committee, citizens rate review committee, and I think traffic safety, if that's the bottom one. Yes, traffic safety. So there you are. That's a direct unabashed pitch. So there you are. Otherwise, we will be convening during the work of the business session this evening. We will deliberate and make a decision, I believe, tonight. And again, we just can't thank you, thank you all enough. And thank you for your willingness to serve this this remarkable community that we live in. So thank you. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Sue, why don't we dial it up for 7:10 for the start of the business session? All right. Otherwise, again, thank you all, and we will see you soon. Stop video and mute your phone, your thing. Don't go off the call. All right, Sue, it looks like 7:10 by my clock. So if you are ready, I believe we are.
I'm ready.
All right. So let us call to order the city council business session for August 7, 2020.
Councillor Nell Holloman. And Lincoln, councillor Martinez Plancarte.
Present.
Mayor Rogers. Councillor Bacon.
Here.
Councillor Finley.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. All right, the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right then, thank you. On to item number four on our agenda. This is presentations. And we've got info on customer service. And I believe it's Will Worthy and Chief Cosmickey. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, and thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. We have some information to impart about our vision for a possible approach on customer service. And Jeff's going to take off first.
We decided to put together a slideshow. We tried to make it too long, but trying to cover everything that we wanted to accomplish. Customer service overhaul and exploration of approaches we could use to improve our customer service expectations and outcomes.
Next slide, please. Narrowly defined customer service is the provision of services to customers before, during, and after a purchase. Thank you very kindly, Wikipedia. For the purposes of this exploration, we'll be considering service in a broader sense. There need not be money changing hands for a service relationship to exist. And especially when you're all committed to serving the same community. Next slide, please.
We thought we put together a couple of visuals of what we're talking about. This is something that we think that should never happen or be said during during our employment. Fortunately, these images were not captured on the streets of Newburgh.
So do we have a customer service problem? Before we explore this issue, I'd like to state broadly that we have seen some examples of poor internal customer service, even in my short time with the city. With that said, I'm not here to shame anybody or any department. But I do prefer to say that we could improve our culture. We can do better. Next slide, please.
Just follow the path. Do we present our internal customers with a lockstep path to follow rather than to really help them? Do we own their problem?
We really can do better. We're here today to ask questions and gain a sense of direction. We hope to change our culture. Even in a city that has gone through the troubles that this one has in recent years, such a city can turn a corner. Next slide, please.
So our internal or external focus, our first question for the city council is one of focus. Should we be focused on how we operate internally first or externally, like public facing? This presentation suggests solutions that will attempt to improve our internal culture. We have, sorry, we propose that this is the first step to fixing how we help our residents.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Internal focus, possible approaches. So you'll see as we go through the next slides, we are suggesting that we can develop five possible approaches that will improve our internal culture and boost customer service so that residents can reap the reward. In other words, what we're saying is that by doing an internal focus first, that will naturally reap dividends for residents later. Next slide, please.
We've been involved in customer service trainings and read widely on the subject, especially after we started on this project. As a result of this education, we suggest that a healthy and effective customer service culture has several key markers.
Clearly, there are recognized markers of the sort of culture we need to build. We want to work in an organization with servant leadership ethos. Leadership that openly embrace their failures and their frailties. That provides a safe space for ideas that allows other staff, even entry level staff, to have a voice. Named, ranked, and understood priorities for the organization that measures what really matters and in fact has artifacts and symbols that can inspire staff to do more. To do all of this, we need to have standard benchmarks that people can aspire to.
So five possible approaches, customer service training and assessment of as part of the onboarding process. We think that's very important. Reengage existing employees to share the new customer service expectations. Existing employees are going to need to embrace what what we decide to come up with and and move move forward with. To do this, we need to establish a smart standard for customer service. This will be projected regularly to all staff. We would want to develop a unified system of recognition for our customer service champions. Developing educational tools to create ongoing culture, an ongoing culture of service and servant leadership. Utilization and C Click Fix to garner public feedback on issues to expedite action. Let's briefly look at the concepts one at a time.
Our first section is considering hiring and onboarding actions that will ensure our future. Next slide, please.
Hiring and onboarding. As an employee of the city of Newburgh, when you think of your customer service, you should think of yourself and your department as part of a larger service team. The citizens you serve are your customers, and they should be able to rely on you and your team to provide top quality service.
Top quality customer service teams should provide the following. A commitment to service and quality. A goal of providing an atmosphere of positive engagement. They should have attention to detail. They should be dedicated to continued improvement. There should be consistent There should be consistency, fairness, honesty, integrity, and an atmosphere of creativity should be encouraged. Recognition should be given when excellent service was provided. Next slide, please.
We've identified some city of Newburgh values, and top quality service teams embody these personality traits. Humility, courteousness, graciousness, thoughtfulness, genuine concern for people, and command of technical skills and knowledge.
We suggest that the qualities just covered be a conscious part of onboarding. We propose that each department should formally assess these during probationary periods. And for that, the Police Department serves as a model, as they are already doing so. Next slide, please.
So some of the smart standards are developing benchmarks that staff can aspire to. We want to make attainable goals.
The areas of investigation that we propose in this area would apply to internal and external customers, although, as I say, internal is our focus first, we would suggest. Standards for leadership and leadership ethics, standards for internal and external contacts, standards for telephone and email response times and accuracy, standards for web service provision, and standards for in-person contacts. And I've got examples to illustrate some of these standards on the next few slides.
Leaders will be well trained to exhibit servant leadership methods. They pick up the trash, as an example. Departments will seek to own the problem of others. At least three times, excuse me, at least three attempts should be made to return inbound telephone. Telephony, telephone. Email requesting input or assistance should be responded to within forty eight hours by live person. Web search boxes should return appropriately indexed context. Content.
So on top of this suggested layer of standards, we would have to make sure that we recognize our champions in customer service so that other people can aspire to be just as successful. Developing ways to celebrate our staff and strengthen our culture is key. We're very aware that what you measure and what you relay is what gets done. Next slide.
For our champions, when a supervisor becomes aware of the employee that has provided a customer with excellent service, it is imperative that the employee be recognized for those efforts. When the employee is recognized for excellence in service, that documentation should be shared with fellow employees and possibly the city manager. This creates a culture that values the higher level of customer service. Again, what is measured is what gets done.
Next slide, please. So here's an example of the sort of commendation that we would want shared widely, not just within the department, but also up and down the hierarchy of the organization. And as you can see from this email, I want to thank everyone who participated in this event. It was well received by the community and the folks who got their meals for the senior meals program. I want to especially recognize Sergeant Mark Crook for taking this on and organizing the Police Department's involvement. His logistical work on this made it run pretty smooth and efficiently. Next slide, please.
So this was another email from one of our sergeants. It says, Chris, I received a phone call today from a citizen who you had stopped for a traffic violation. And I took out the name. Miss S. was very appreciative of the way you handled yourself. She described you as being nice, kind, and enjoyable. She referred to the traffic stop as being something that would normally be negative, normally be a negative experience. And this was instead a positive based on the way you conducted yourself. She wanted to make sure your supervisors knew how good of a job you were doing. I know being friendly and professional are standards for you. This is important, and the people you contact notice and appreciate it. Thank you for the manner in which you conduct yourself and represent the department.
We suggest, as well as sharing these sorts of accolades, that a system should be created that recognize customer service champions from all departments as a citywide award, possibly with an ongoing merit element. Next slide, please.
For ongoing education, tools we have at our disposal to keep the customer service focus in line.
Now fortunately, the city has already invested a lot of time and effort into NeoGov as a hiring platform. We suggest using this tool to develop inexpensive mandated training around customer service. In the next few slides, we're going to list some examples of the sorts of courses that are already available on the NeoGov catalog. Next slide, please.
For the examples, I won't read them all. For the entire slide, we'll give you a few minutes to look at what we propose.
And it's important to mention, this is just the tip of the iceberg. There is a tremendous amount of training materials available on the platform. Next slide, please. So of course, in coming here today, we're really seeking some feedback and some direction. We've made an assumption about an internal focus first, hoping that that will then spill over into beneficial results for residents. Is this what you had in mind when you created this goal for the city? Next slide, please.
We've suggested four approaches. And one IT tool that could combine to enhance customer service. We have suggested that we should start with an internal focus. Our thesis says that the internal focus will pay off extremely later via a culture shift. Do these approaches align with the content and what you guys had in mind for goals?
And and with that, I'd really like to open it out to the entire council and and kind of do a sanity check on our suggestions.
Mayor.
For a sanity check, let's let's do it. All right, we've got comments.
I'm ready.
Go Denise.
I love customer service. I don't know if you know, I started my life in humongous restaurants, like million dollar restaurants. And I, when I came to Oregon, I got a million dollar restaurant that wasn't making a million dollars. I had high turnover in staff. They hadn't had a manager in a long time. They didn't know what customer service was at all. So the first thing I did was sit in my office and watch them for a month. And then the next thing I did was anytime I saw an employee of mine doing something that was above what I had based my last month of watching, that they would do something extraordinary. I would go out and I'd write their name on a board and I'd say, you know, thank you so much. What you did really meant a lot to me. The next day I came into work, there's people doing all kinds of stuff. And as I'm thanking them, writing it on the board, and they're all running over to see if their name was there. These are restaurant employees, right? These are minimum wage, first job people. But when you have happy staff, that happy staff greets your customer in a different way than a mad staff would or a staff that's unsure or a staff that doesn't feel appreciated. So I completely agree with the internal first because you cannot fake good customer service if you are a miserable person. So if you're, if you don't like your job, you're not going to do a great job. So I think that is a great approach. Training is only so much. You know, you can, you can train and train and train, and people don't necessarily if they don't care, the training is not going to do anything. Hiring people who have that will in them first, and then being great bosses and being a great community is a is a really good place to start. And it will lessen your turnover in the long run, too, which is also a good thing because turnover is expensive. That's what I have to say.
All right, who else? Other comments, folks? Elise.
Still muted.
Hoping the dogs aren't going to be loud. So yes, this is what I was thinking. I definitely agree on an internal culture shift prior to an external facing. Hearing an echo, are you guys hearing an echo? Look, I'm going to say what I want to say, and then I'll get off quickly. But the two points I wanted to make is that I do think that it's important that department heads report out progress regularly to us. Oh, my gosh, I'm hearing really weird. And then the second thing is when we do shift to have that external focus, how do we tailor our customer service to different populations? So having that diversity, equity, and inclusion outlook. You know, our houseless population probably needs to be approached differently by any department that we're a part of, as does our people of color in our community. Oh, my gosh, this is so bad. As does our developers. So just tailoring that approach to the population, I think, is really important. And I think that internal education will support that. But I will just say that I really wanted to applaud the transparency in the presentation that we can be better because as a customer of the city, I know that there have been interactions that I've witnessed that I think that we can do better. And I know I can do better in my customer service in my response to citizens. So I think that we're all a part of this, and it's not on city staff, it's on each one of us. And I'm really excited to be a part of the solution with each of you.
All right, who else? Other thoughts?
I agree with, I agree with what both Denise and Elise said, is that absolutely internally is is what we talked about when we developed that goal, is that the culture internally is is something that really needs to be focused on before we can start providing the level of customer service that we know individually. Everybody has the capacity to do with our city employees. And one thing, and I think it was implied in the presentation, but I would also like to really stress the customer service between the departments within the city. I think that's something that I found was really lacking when I came into my role at City Council, is that there was a lot of disconnect between the different departments. And I think a lot of that had to do with not providing good customer service to people in other departments and also not recognizing other departments for the good things that they're doing. So we often get information about how great one department is doing from within inside that department. But we get less feedback around what another department is doing well and how they are serving you in your department. And so I'd really like to see, in particular, we know that we had some issue with department heads. And I would really like to see that level of customer service being offered to your peers that are department heads and are in other departments. But absolutely, I think the first step to providing good customer service to the people outside of the agency is doing it within.
Jules, what do you think?
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to thank Will and Jeff for the presentation. It was very well put together. So thank you for putting that. And also shadowing a little bit about what Stephanie and Elise have both shared. When we're talking about the hiring practices and the onboarding, I would really like our city to push it even further in terms of like what outreach and practices practices are we having when we want to hire more diverse populations or folks that are self identified as POC? Because as you mentioned in your presentation, we're looking for this top quality service, right? As we're doing this for the city, but who is this top quality service for? Not necessarily, it's not going to look the same for everyone. And one really good example I can think of is Betina Garcia. For example, my parents are also like immigrants here. They feel most comfortable going to Betina Garcia. Then going to other clinic here in Newburgh, and they've been going there for years and years, and all my family goes to Betina Garcia. Why? Because the customer service is very specific to the population. So they're serving, they feel welcome when they walk in through the door. They know that these folks are going to have some of the cultural background and or be able to cater or shift when they need to. And Betina Garcia doesn't only see like the immigrant or the next population, they see a very diverse. But I think this is a great example of where the city of Newburgh needs to be heading. And if that means hiring, I think we've been talking for a while now about hiring, you know, who's going to replace Rosa, who was at the city of Newburgh previously with, well, also the city of Newburgh, but as a library librarian, like why haven't we pushed further if we're talking about high and poor in diversity, equity, and inclusion? Especially in the hiring practices and onboarding, why are we not taking that next step? And I know, like, you know, budgets, all that, you know, everything is up in the air, but I think we really have to put our money where, you know, we say we're going or or trying to head towards.
Mr. Mayor, can I just respond to that real quickly? We have made that attempt for the Latino librarian position, I think, twice now. And really, I think Will may be able to speak to it, that we've not been successful. And I think it actually speaks to what you're saying, Jules. It's really about being attractive to broader and more diverse set of applicants. But, you know, it's a customer service, and we're stuck a little bit right now in chicken and egg paradigm right now, I think. And maybe Will wants to add to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jules, it's actually been one of my dreams is to have Spanish office hours in the library, just to name my own department, so that there's a time when everybody on all the desks speaks Spanish as a native. And unfortunately, through two recruitments, including one of the most extensive recruitment attempts I've ever done in my life, reaching out to eight different states, to twenty five colleges, to all of the reformer groups in the entire Western Seaboard. And we were not able to get anybody who would apply for the position. And but that will continue to be on the forefront of my agenda until the time when, at least in library respect, we'll be able to meet people on desk where they're at. But when I, when we consider customer service objectives, meeting people where they're at and recognizing cultural differences, that's going to be in black and white if I write the document.
You know, all right, well, thank you. You know, one thing I would like to clarify a little bit is that Rosa's position when she ended up was not with the library. She was especially as a liaison to the Latinx population. So that was slightly different. The only thing that I would argue to Will and Dan is that, you know, if we've made these great extensive researches, maybe the job's not right. Maybe the parameters of job are not such that we're going to get candidates, and whether that's because it's part time or or the hours, whatever it is, maybe the job's not right. So I'll just throw that out there. So the other thing is on this, on the question, again, I applaud, again, Will, chief, I applaud you for taking this on. I think it's absolutely great. And I think the thing that I think and have found, I guess, in the last whatever year and a half is that, you know, it's very difficult to be providing customer service when you're also regulating. Or in the chief's case, you're arresting, or Will has to tell people when the book is due back. So it's tricky to do that. And I think that that is something that I know you recognize, and I think it's great. I thought talking about internal, as everybody said, is absolutely the way to go. Hiring and onboarding is absolutely important, vital. I'm glad to hear that the Police Department is doing that already. The creativity, I read that to mean that, you know, oftentimes bureaucracies can answer no because that's what the code says. So the first response is no. In my mind, the creativity means no, it's not no, it's how can we solve whatever the problem may be? I love the responsiveness as well, setting parameters and guidelines for responsiveness. That's a real pet peeve of mine, the responsiveness. And then the training on NeoGov, I think, is is absolutely fantastic that it's there. And like I said, I applaud you all. And and the other thing is if, you know, if if you needed support for a merit element for great customer service, I for one would be all in support of that, providing we had the money and the budget. So so thank you. Any other comments, folks? On this, did chief and and Will, did that give you enough to go on, do you think?
And I shall, I'll defer to Jeff first because I think I've said enough.
It sounds like Will and I are on the right track. A lot of it's going to be working now, moving forward. I think a lot of it, Will, if you agree, is going to be working with Dan and also department heads because because things that are more important to me might not be as important to Will. Not that our customers and our customer services, obviously very important, but how do we measure that as a department? I think is what we're gonna probably, probably take the next step in identifying. And I'm sure that City Manager Weinheimer will probably be meeting with each individual department. As an example, when we hire an officer, the first thing that they do is they get graded on 33 things every single day for 18 months. So that's a little bit more pressure than maybe another department. You know, I don't mean to put anybody down, but I don't think planning and, and, you know, development, maybe they don't have 33 things to, you know, make sure that people are doing correctly every single day. But using their expertise will help guide. But we've all seen bad customer service. We've all thought, wow, I hope I never get that type of service. That's absolutely paramount to what we want to avoid.
All right, thank you. Anything else, folks? Okay. Thank you, Will Chief, thank you so very much. Oh, Will, did you have something to say? I'm sorry.
Well, just thank you very much, folks, for this very cordial reception.
Great, all right, thank you. Again, thank you all so very much and we'll hope to hear more in the not-too-distant future. So thank you. All right, next on the agenda, item 4B. We've got Leslie Caldwell and Tase Newburgh and an update from Tase Newburgh. Leslie?
Hello, thank you, Mayor Rogers, council and staff. I'm pleased to present our Q4 formally report today. It covers the time frame from April 2020. Next slide, please. Next slide, thank you. So, to those of you, oh, can we do that one? Sorry, please. Well, we'll just go ahead and do it without. So this slide before this one, basically I list the Board of Directors, the mission statement and the purpose of the organization for those of you who are new to caring and knowing about Taste Newburgh. So we were formed in February of 2019 as a nonprofit by the One C6. And our, our goal is to enhance Newburgh's economy by attracting tourists to the region and ensuring that they support local businesses during their visit. And so we appointed a group of board members who represent tourism entities in the community and also have ex officio members such as Elise. Thank you, Elise, for serving on our board as ex officio. And then we also have Shannon Buckmaster and Ted Crawford from Travel D M D. Next slide, please. So our primary asset is our website. We've been busy updating the website regularly with fresh content, which includes adding new business listings. As you might recall, we launched this website in late March. And so we've just been trying to get it built out to maximum capacity as far as having the most virtual information that somebody might want from a visitor center. So the specific content aggregates from Travel Oregon, which is the destination marketing organization for the state. And then it also is shared on our regional DMO's website, which is Willamette Valley Visitors Association. And so we also, on the website, have a COVID resource page, which serves to provide visitor resources specific to traveler's safety protocols and requirements, guidance on visiting restaurants, wineries, et cetera, and also links to state and local resources. Additionally, on this site, we wrote and published blog stories about local businesses, events, and attractions. This quarter, from April to June, we included a blog story about Father's Day activity suggestions, as well as the summer staycation and outdoor activities, among others. Basically, we're trying to promote events for places for people to visit that are outside, that they can be safe, that they can be physically distanced, really just trying to follow the COVID guidelines at this point. So our goal is to provide inspiration and safe travel ideas for Oregonians, as well as to provide evergreen content that Google will index, which will assist the website in improving our webpage ranking. But overall goal is to inspire people for visits now, if they're comfortable visiting now or dreaming of travel later when we're past this COVID time. Next slide, please. So to talk about some of the website analytics, as a reminder, we launched in late March. So we're in the building phase of gaining website traffic, as well as traction on our social media channels. So our website users increased by 126% between April and end of June. We had 1,125 sessions, 3,500 page views, and an average of three and a half minutes on the site. So for comparison purposes, during the same quarter in 2019, the Chamber site had 1,300 sessions and average time on site of 1.36 minutes. So we're just kind of trying to see how we're benchmarking to that site. And as you might recall, we transferred over, we redirected the visitor page from the Chamber site over to the Taste Newburgh site. I think it was early April that we completed that work. So we are overall encouraged with the steady growth in our first full quarter of being online. We're especially happy that our content is keeping people engaged on the site. So from a social media standpoint, it's experiencing a bit slower growth rate than the website, but still steady. Instagram has the most followers so far. And while engagements are about equal between Facebook and Instagram. So engagement means likes, comments, shares, follows. So we believe their audience will grow steadily based on our post and engagement strategy. Next slide, please. So our social media focus at this point in time is primarily COVID-driven, or it was for April through June, for sure. As you can see from the examples of the posts that I listed here. So we highlighted cultural and winery virtual events. We highlighted restaurant-to-go offerings, virtual concerts at the drive-in, the Wednesday market. We created a video for the downtown pollution with examples of appropriate distancing. We highlighted hotel and restaurant reopenings, traveler guidance on masking, and other responsible behavior recommendations. So we also shared Newburgh tourism-related stories that are, that were featured on external media sites such as Forbes.com and K G W and Fox Hope. Next slide, please. So from a photography standpoint, we're still building out our image library. It's a continued work in progress. This past quarter, we focused on capturing imagery that would be compelling for visitors who might just want to day trip to the area and view the scenic beauty of our farm and wine country from their car window, or enjoy outdoor activities on the river, for example. We also photographed businesses with staff in masks. We produced a video for Newburgh Wednesday Market. We shot numerous other short videos promoting outdoor beauty, wineries, outdoor offerings, and more. There were over 850 video views on our social channels. And we'll continue to kind of follow the market as far as what type of content that visitors are looking for as we pass through these phases of COVID. So next slide, please. So during the quarter, we sourced, reviewed, interviewed, and selected a public relations agency. We feel that a public relations agency is critical in reaching out to media and really being able to get stories about the area that it's earned media and it doesn't cost us money such as advertising. And so we felt that this was one of the key things that we could be doing during these, especially during this time of challenge. So the agency we selected was with a mashup, if you will, of two different well-known tourism and wine-focused public relations agency owners, one of whom is actually based here in Newburgh. Lila Martin, some of you may know, who is married to Christian Di Benedetti, who is the owner of Wolves of People Farmhouse Brewery. And so she's one of the two partners that are serving in this function as our official PR team. So we were happy to be able to give back to the local economy through this vendor selection. And they started their annual, or their contract with us on June 1st. They focused their energies in June on building local and regional media awareness at Taste Newburgh through a launch press release. They analyzed and advised our website copy, social media strategy and content. They began working on our media kit copy from the website and also communicated the Willamette Valley Responsible Reopening Program to the Newburgh Graphic, which resulted in an article published in July. Next slide, please. So on the next few pages, I list all of the media mentions and accolades that we received from April through June. Hopefully, you'll have a chance, or have had a chance to read a few of the great articles that were published with mentions of our area tourism businesses. On this page in particular, note is the amount of interest in the 99W drive-in for a safe activity. It's getting a lot of attention these days. Next slide, please. So there was quite a lot of coverage about the Newburgh area wineries spearheaded by Raptor Ridge Winery, who participated in the program to donate 20,000 cases of wine to frontline healthcare workers in our area. So there was quite a lot of media play on that. Next slide, please. One of the more unique things that we pitched out to media, we had a request about unique farm offerings. And so we let the media know about the fact that we have a worm farm off of Highway 240. And as a result, that we actually received a feature article on shape.com. Next slide, please. And then lastly, in June, we had an notable article from the Seattle Post Intelligencer, which was about how to road trip safely and had a nice little section about the Alice. Excuse me, the Allison. And again, in June, there was a lot of additional drive-in activity as far as article mentions. Next slide, please. So this is the slide where we keep track of how our transit lodging tax revenues are coming in by the quarter. And so it tracks the receipts that come in to the city. And as you can see in the Q4 2020, which is the fourth column to the right, year-over-year revenues were down 84%. So that gives you really a picture of what's happening in our time with tourism at this point. The Allison was closed between mid-March and June 3rd. And so for comparison, last year, the Allison represented 65% of the Q4 revenues. And this year, they represented 19%. So as you can imagine, that's, that has a pretty dramatic effect on what our budget numbers are looking like. And so, you know, it's kind of a, it's a tricky situation because even when they reopened, they didn't reopen with all of their inventory. So they have 85 rooms available on a normal day where they reopen in June with only 25 rooms available to rent on any given night. And then they also keep 24 to 48 hours between rental of that room so that they can ensure that it's cleaned properly. Additionally, a year ago, their average rates were probably ranging between $450 and $500. And they reopened at a $200 room rate. So there's two different impacts there that really have affected us. So year-end receipts for fiscal year 2018, 20 ended at $836,000 compared to prior year at 1.146 million. So that equates to a 27% decrease for a year. So at this point in time, our goal of growing leisure visitor volume and overnight stays appears to be a little bit on the horizon still, but we're hopeful. We just remain hopeful and keep doing the work that we need to be doing to be ready for when this turns around. Next slide, please. So one of our annual business plan goals is to nurture and support the community through partnerships and collaborations, as stated in our annual plan. So through active engagement with our state, regional, and county DMO teams, DMO standing for destination marketing organizations, we're able to leverage programming to be most effective for our local tourism strategies and campaigns. However, due to COVID, a number of our programs needed to be postponed, including an Expedia ad campaign that we have scheduled for March through May, as well as the Dundee, Newburgh, Wake Up in Wine Country social media campaign. We have performed probably about 85% of that campaign and had another month or two to go. So we're just putting that on hold until it makes some sense for a better time. It was for targeting shoulder and off-season anyway. So we decided we're in a permanent shoulder and off-season, but isn't the best time to spend? And we felt that it wasn't at this point. So instead, we had, we turned our focus to the Willamette Valley Responsible Reopening Program, which is a program to convey what local businesses are doing to ensure safety protocols are in place and to ensure that, ensure that visitors and residents know that these businesses commit to standards, prioritizing guest overall comfort and safety. This program was offered to all tourism-facing businesses in the Willamette Valley. And there are over 200 businesses participating at this point in time. It was free of charge to any business who wanted to participate. And we were able to provide window clings and posters and stickers for anybody who's interested. And this was funded through the Willamette Valley Visitors Association. So we are also holding photo shoots. We, through the M H O tourism partnership, we've received a grant from M H O County to expand our image library for just some imagery that doesn't necessarily relate to a specific city, if you will, but some of the smaller towns that don't have budgets for photography or if we're missing photography on outdoor recreation, for example. We're also out shooting, we have to reshoot a lot of our photography to show staff being masked. If somebody's out wine tasting, for example, we have to show masked staff. And also showing events where people are socially distanced and appropriate masking is in place. Because otherwise, you're advertising, if anybody is advertising, you really can't use the photography that was pre-COVID at this point. So we're happy to receive that grant and that's what we're working on there. Next slide, please. So another one of our business plan goals was to develop the group market. We created a virtual event planning guide, which is now up on the Taste Newburgh site. We stay in touch with area hotels regarding group opportunities. But in April to June, that was really virtually non-existent. One major cycling event that was to be held in late October looks to be, it was put on hold and I'm pretty sure that that's gonna be canceled as well at this point in time. So projections are right now, the group business is really not likely to resume until 2021. We're not even sure what quarter in 2021. So we're just kind of monitoring that and we'll pick that activity back up again when the time is right. Next slide, please. And so this gives you a picture of how the quarter performed and also how we performed year-end for the fiscal year. So the Newburgh share of T L T revenue, which you see in the April-June column, shows the funds that were received in the fourth quarter, which approached $26,000. Then we were also happy to be awarded a Travel Oregon Emergency Relief Grant in the amount of $10,000. So total year's actual revenue payments were, ended up being at 60% of the annual budgeted revenue. From a marketing expense standpoint, our marketing programs were just starting to roll out in March. And so when COVID struck, we were able to pull back on the majority of the plant expenses. And so the result of that was that we were able to only spend 43% of our annual budgeted expense for the fiscal year. So these two, you know, with these total revenue being 60% of total, expenses being 43% of total, we were able to actually finish the year at 100% of what was budgeted for net income. So we're in good shape there. But in the coming year, we really have to watch closely what's coming in with that transit lodging tax revenue. I think in your work session, there was a little bit of commentary about that. That's really gonna make a big difference, you know, as to how we go forward in this coming year. So we're, you know, we're managing cash flow and expenses closely. We're delaying advertising campaigns until COVID conditions allow and travel restrictions are lifted. And at this point, by city projections, Taste Newburgh has not anticipated to receive any funding allocation until January of 2021. So we're very thankful to have the carryover funds that we received last year and we're spending from that bank, if you will. And so we'll just continue to monitor the situation as closely as we can. Next slide, please. And so I just want to thank everybody for your attention and allowing me to present to you today. And I'm certainly available and welcome any questions you might have.
All right, folks, questions?
All right, folks, questions? I can't see all of you, so speak up if you have any questions. All right, let's see. Oh, sorry, Sue. I was hoping you'd flip back through the pictures real quick, if you could do that. Can you flip through all the slides quickly? Thank you. All right, well, I'll ask a question, Leslie, while she's doing. At one point, you had mentioned at some point that you're getting web traffic from the Chambers website. Do you have an idea of how much there was?
Well, I know from the reports that the Chamber, in the Chamber Quarterly reports, there are certain statistics that they reported in there. If that's what your question is.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't have it this last time they reported, so I was just wondering, because I think they said that you, that you were recording that. And then, which begs the other question is, and maybe this is just for somebody else, is the, is the Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center open now? Do we know? Anybody?
I think it's open to, you know, essentially, like, hand things out, but not necessarily just to walk in, you know? So I mean, it's almost like it's closed but open, sort of like City Hall was for a while.
Okay, thank you.
It's available for anybody that calls, and it's available by appointment. And there, I know that Shannon's on the call. I think I saw Shannon on the call, but I don't know if she can answer.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, that's okay. I mean, I can, we'll get it later, but, all right, Sue, if you could just flip through these, that'd be great.
But to answer your question, I did give a comparison from this quarter to the Chambers quarter this past year.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and always happy to pull any statistics like that for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I believe that every one of these photos was taken by us, by our marketing manager.
Okay.
Except for maybe not that one.
Probably good. Here's, here's what I'll say, and I don't, I don't want to be that guy, but I'm going to run the risk of being that guy. I don't see a single person of color in any of the pictures.
Good point.
But that's something that, that again, with our focus on DEI at the city, I think that that's, that's an unfortunate oversight. So that's just a comment. So there it is.
Well, and I can address that a little bit. We've been, we've been working on this photo shoot countywide, and we have been with a very specific goal of diversity in those images. And it has been a pretty good success, but it's been an interesting journey. And so I think that it's definitely one of our goals is to show diversity, but also to not, to not be tokenizing in our advertising or in our messaging. So we're taking a very careful walk down that path. But you're right, in this one, it's not there. So that's a good shout out, and I appreciate that. But, but we're, and the other thing that I, that I haven't addressed is it didn't start until July, but the Willamette Valley Visitors Association has started a Race Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force, in which I am on that task force. And they also have implemented a training program that is tourism-focused to a certain extent, and that task, and that training begins this month. And so it's definitely work that the task force meets twice a month, and it's, it's got a lot of, there's a lot of heavy lifting in that, in that task that's coming down the pipe. And so I'm sure that I will be reaching out to you all about that, especially to Dan, you know, just to see if we're, you know, there's any similarities in the past that we're on as far as DEI, you know, training and work that we're doing. And, and I'm sure that, you know, we're trying to take it back to the Willamette Valley Visitors Association as far as, you know, what our community, where our community journey is in that area. So I will be, it's a lot, it's a lot of, it's a lot of learning, but it's good.
All right, Leslie, thank you. Any, any other questions for Leslie, folks? All right, thank you. Thank you for all of your good works. All right, moving on in the agenda, it looks like the City Managers Report, item number five.
I'm used to going so much earlier. This is weird, but I'll try to keep it relatively brief. We'll post this manager's report on the website in its entirety. I think it's about 11 pages, so a lot of good things happening in the city. Just a quick overview, we are, of course, still working on COVID-19 response, and in particular, still working on the CARES Act and funding reimbursements and funding for projects that will help us hopefully be more customer service-minded, use the underscore of the goal there, but also really trying to serve our internal, our staff and to be physically distanced and do all the things from a health standpoint as well. So we were able to reimburse a substantial amount of money, but are now also in the process of spending some of the money that we can do on renovations to be able to physically distance staff and by using our archive records building, adding some laptops so that we're able to standardize the technology that our staff is using and hopefully reduce the volume of requests for IT assistance and help desk and allow our staff and IT to be more efficient and focused on, on specific projects that are not help desk oriented. And then also working on some equipment upgrades as far as the modules that will allow our staff to do some of their work off-premise and telework, be able to do some of the HR and finance work effectively. And I think, also wanted to just mention, related to COVID, we're working on telework as an ongoing effort. You know, I think like all of us, we assumed we'd be in a different place right now as far as the disease and disease management, but we've sort of come to the realization I have that we're probably in it for the rest of the calendar year at least. And so focusing on telework through the end of the calendar year and possibly beyond that, and trying to adjust our policies and procedures and direction to staff and provide a little more clarity there about the, what a telework office needs to have and all those kinds of things. And so working through some of those processes. The recruitment end, I had a conversation with our recruiter this morning. The Assistant City Manager received 113 applicants, and so she is working through a couple steps of secondary or middle-stage interviewing, pre-interviewing for us, and we'll likely talk about those, she and I, at the beginning of September, and hopefully be able to interview more the end of September. Anxious as everyone is, I think, to get that position filled and to have some, someone who will be with us on a permanent basis in that role and taking on some of the HR tasks, especially given what we've been talking about today in terms of customer service and sort of focus on internal activities. Real quick update on elections, the filing period for city council seats closed today. The last-day plugs, public service announcement, the last day to register to vote is October 13th. And further public service announcement, as though it was needed, the election is on November 3rd. And so don't forget to use that, that vote that you just got. And so hopefully people will be, and the community will be active and engaged throughout the next few months. We, I just wanted to also provide some information that Sue gave me about the activities of boards and commissions. You know, we talked about service on the boards and commissions, and I think it's really helpful to understand what they're taking on right now, and, you know, their advisory to the city council and to the community on a lot of important issues. And so right now, Historic Preservation is doing an inventory of historic markers. Traffic Safety just is conducting or has conducted a hearing on Sheridan Street and parking there, and is also considering an issue related to trash pickup days. The Planning Commission just met on a Shealem Drive property annexation. Library Commission is working on a long-range, five-year plan, 2020 to 2025. So there's a lot of exciting work that I think people can contribute to as volunteers to the community and to the city as an organization. And hopefully, some of the folks who we heard from earlier in the work session will contribute their time, and others will be inspired to do that as well. So other items, I'm not past page one, so I got to move a little faster, but I was able to make a hire for Economic Health Manager, and so Shannon Buckmaster has accepted the position. She's going to be moving over from the Shealem Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I'm excited to have her join us, given her knowledge of local businesses and of the community. And really excited, in part because of the, really the need for this position right now. There's a level, I feel a level of urgency to provide, you know, really business support and try to give some level of connectivity, I guess, between the levels of government that are trying to provide support and service and all these programs that are super confusing and changing constantly. But to have somebody who's really focused entirely and laser-focused on that level of support, I think is going to be helpful in the short term, hopefully, for some of our businesses, and hopefully we'll be able to retain or help them through this time of COVID. And then in the future, I think really this position will pay dividends in business retention, be able to hopefully even work on the expansion of businesses and, and maybe business attraction in the future as well. So a position that's needed now, and I'm excited to have someone of Shannon's caliber join the team. And so her first day will actually be this Friday. Moving on to some of the departmental highlights, the Public Works Department provided, as they always do, a lengthy list of activities, which I can only sum up, well, I can sum up with a lot of things, and I will, but one of the highlights would be that the number of work orders completed from this calendar year alone is nearly 9,500 for Public Works. And so they're really busy doing a lot of work, a lot of maintenance work, as you might imagine. But, you know, every aspect of that department is really working hard on, especially in these warmer months, trying to maintain the assets we have and to do the work that will hopefully help the community. Just thinking about, in particular, the Engineering Department is working with community engagement to create or to provide information about a sidewalk program, so sidewalk grants for residents, and so hopefully help on one of the city council goals, but also provide some, some information to the community as well about the importance of it, but also some resources to help with sidewalks in front of homes and probably businesses as well. With the, some of the other capital projects, the crack and slurry seal, everyone's favorite thing, the pavement maintenance project for the year is complete. The construction on the public safety building roof, the strengthening project is underway. And I think if you're sitting in Jeff's office during the day, you can probably hear them. But hopefully that will be done the end of this month. The solar farm project has started, kind of underscored that with the city council goal for sustainability. And that project, the request for proposals is, has been completed, and there's negotiations ongoing, and hopefully we will have a contract for council consideration very soon, sometime in September. And let's see, what else? Sidewalks, speaking of sidewalks, there's a plan that Memorial Park will get some sidewalks along the edge of the park, and that should happen sometime in September. The Public Works Department was actually nice enough to provide some art for the report, so when you look on the website, there's some nice pictures from Public Works. One of those is related to August 11th. They were given, they were dispatched to Water Main Break at Ninth and River, and we've got a picture of the failed pipe. So people want to know kind of what that, the pipe looked like and what caused the failure. The picture's there, but they got a call at about 7:00 PM on the 11th and had the repairs done with the crews on scene, had the repairs done, I think sometime in the early hours of the morning, about 3:30. So kudos to them for getting on it really quickly and taking care of that, that issue. Also, within the water area, they have received 139 customer service calls this month, and that was 59 connects, 38 disconnects, 42 customer leak investigations, and performed annual maintenance on water meters and did some other installations as well. The streets, storm area, they did some cleaning and painting of city curbs. I hope that people have paid attention to that. I've been really impressed with how bright the colors are all of a sudden of a lot of our, the curbs, the, the pavement markers and things like that. And so there's been a lot of improvement there, and, you know, really want to appreciate the work that's been done there to really identify where, where to park, where to, where to not park, you know, all the safety elements of the community. I think it's also helpful where to bike and not bike. I think I've seen some of those sharrows improved as well and spruced up with some paint. So hopefully that's a little clearer where there are bike routes designated in the community. But they've done as well, something you might notice if you're in downtown, pressure-washed and cleaned 20 of the garbage cans, the colorful garbage cans that are in downtown. Those were replaced, I think, the last couple days. And so along the sidewalks in downtown, those are back and in clean working order. One thing that I know we've gotten some questions about from residents, along South Springbrook Road, there was a number of trees that had been recently installed and had died or were in rough shape. So those are being replaced, their, the plans are being finalized right now. Those are special trees in terms of the actual variety that was selected by the contractor, and so they're in the process of getting those. It took a little while to order them from a kind of a timeliness or time of growing, growing season standpoint. And so those should be installed sometime in the early fall and replaced. Additionally, just wanted to kind of point out, it's been hot, and probably don't need to point that out to everyone, but maybe especially not to the mayor without AC, but that water treatment plant has kind of seen some of that. They have produced over 110 millions, million gallons of water, and that's just in the month of July, and that's about average. But we're starting to see increased use. We'd been low for a while with the cooler weather and starting to see change in that We did, speaking of the change in usage, send recycled water, as we do, to the Shealem Glen Golf Course. And in July, the recycled water was, that was sent over there was a little over, almost 12 million gallons, a little less than that. And that's about double the consumption of June. So, you know, you can see there a change in the weather and the need to, to send more water. One of the other pieces of art that was included, and again, tune into the report when it gets posted, but flushable wipes continue to be a problem, and there's a really disgusting picture of what that, what, what it looks like. And, you know, remind people, don't flush the wipes, please. It, it tends to clog things up, and it's bare to open those pipes up and take care of. So please throw them in the trash, dispose of them elsewhere, but not down the toilet. In the library, so moving on, the library saw in July 17,567 circulation events, so we'll have to assume that those are materials, but that's about half of a normal July. What we're seeing continues to be a lower level of foot traffic, where what we'd asked was that one member of the family come in and pick up materials. And right now, we're running foot traffic at about 35%. So, and that's based on the previous year. And so I think that that's what is happening. You know, people are still biding by that, that request, and, and we're still seeing good use of the library, just individuals rather than, you know, the whole family. One thing to note as well, speaking of city council goals, is that the library is, has posted on their website actually some information about a reading club for the family, and it's an anti-racist family book club. And so there are some recommended books and some resources that the library is going to provide. I think there are 30 copies of each book available, and so please check out that. And I think there's some discussion questions and discussion groups that are available to kind of... available to, um, kind of dive into those topics and to really understand, uh, more about the topic. And, uh, that'll happen between, um, excuse me, between August and, uh, November in, uh, of this year. So, uh, exciting to have a, some dialogue in the community that's sponsored by the library. Um, the police department, uh, recently completed, uh, installation of evidence room. Uh, so they essentially took the same footprint and, uh, took out what was, uh, seemingly IKEA air of vintage furniture and, um, you know, all the storage there for evidence and the pass through the controls and, and that sort of thing. And had seen its better days. It was probably, um, installed when the building was first built. And, um, on some level, it was time. Uh, they're able to, uh, significantly increase, uh, the amount of storage, the quality of the evidence storage and the security of the evidence, evidence storage, um, under the same footprint. And so that project was recently complete. We got to see it. It looks great. It looks much more secure. Uh, I tested it and, uh, I think had to fix a few things after I was there, but, um, it was, it looks great. And, uh, hopefully it will be an improvement. Um, the, also wanted to mention that the, uh, police department have activated, uh, Community Response Team, CRT. And that team is really focused on, uh, sort of these persistent issues in communities, um, issues maybe surrounding a specific property, uh, that's a problem that kind of continues to be a problem over and over again. And, uh, really trying to work on some, some problem solving around those properties. And so that's something that they've deployed, uh, successfully in a few different areas of town and, uh, recently working on some homes where, uh, some people who were maybe not, uh, fine upstanding neighborhood, uh, residents were, uh, were shown a different path. And so, uh, hopefully a success for the community and for that neighborhood, um, and, you know, just resulting from an intervention from the, the police department. Um, just quickly on finance, uh, they're working on, uh, their annual audit and, or the city's annual audit and the, the comprehensive annual financial report. Um, the, they're also able to beta test through a relationship with, um, one of Matt Zook's, uh, relationships with, within the finance world. They're beta testing a long-range financial planning software, uh, which is a, a value to the city and also hopefully a value to the finance department, um, in, you know, accessing something that hopefully can be a step above the Excel world, um, and, and results in some better forecasting for us when it comes to budgets. Um, in community development, uh, just continue to, to work through projects, uh, you know, essentially doing the plan review and, and, uh, getting projects, uh, turned around and, and, you know, essentially doing the, the day-to-day unplanning. Uh, economic development, working on meetings related to COVID and, and monitoring the situation at a regional level, uh, and monitoring things at the, um, West Rock site and, and fielding inquiries there. Um, working on some of the, uh, grants related to housing and, and I think you'll hear more about that in a minute. And, um, you're really trying to work through some of the, the building department issues, related to some active projects that are ongoing, some really big things around the Crestview Crossing and, uh, some of the other, the towns that we support. Um, I think building activity is generally a little bit down, uh, with the economy, but, um, we're expecting, given what we see coming through the planning department, we'll see an uptake in the, in short order, probably in the next few months. And last but not least, uh, community engagement, um, C Click Fix is something we've talked about here before. I just want to continue to mention it because I think it'll be really cool and not just cool, but really helpful. Um, and, uh, that is an application that you can download on your phone and essentially be able to take pictures of, uh, an issue that would be something directed to the city department. Uh, hey, like the traditional example of, hey, here's a pothole. Um, and it'll geolocate that with a picture and help our crews. It'll be routed directly to the folks in the appropriate department by tagging that type of an issue. Um, hopefully it will allow our crews to see what the issue is, to come mobilized, prepared to deal with it and be able to loop back in a communication to whoever posted that, um, picture. The hope is that, uh, as we're working through some of the backend of the workflows, that that app will be ready sometime the end of this month. And, uh, when it is, we'll bank a big to-do and hopefully people will download it and use it because it'll also help us track some of those, uh, problem areas and problem issues and really provide us some good data for the city in terms of the backend of what types of things we're dealing with on a regular basis. Um, the community engagement also, uh, something from the budget, uh, has interviewed four, uh, proposers for a communication consultant, uh, contractual, uh, relationship and, uh, believe, uh, would expect a decision this week, uh, from Lacy on that. Um, all good, uh, offers. And essentially that will help do public engagement and community engagement, uh, help support what she's already doing and also help, uh, add some help, uh, or some time related to, um, some of the tools that she has available, some of the content that she's asked to create and, uh, really hopefully beef up, um, again, kind of the outreach to the communities and also, um, the quality of materials we're putting out and the clarity. Um, and just one last note, uh, we, you may have seen if you're, you've been at the Wednesday market, that, uh, last couple of weeks, we've had a booth there. Uh, we are partnering in a, a booth with the Sustainable Solutions Group, the community group that's doing sustainability, um, trying to, to pair up and also, uh, drive home that message of activities that people can take, uh, to promote sustainability at home and within the community. And so talking about some city programs that we have available and, uh, just some things that people can do from the, the community's perspective. And hopefully they're, they're gathering some information as well, not just pushing, uh, putting things in hands, but, um, but also listening and, and hearing from, from residents. So I'm excited to hear what comes from that, um, only a couple of weeks in, but that booth will be at the market through the rest of the market season and, um, hopefully a good partnership there. And I think that is where I will leave it. Again, we'll post this, uh, the rest of this report. It's a whole lot more information and then apologize for how long I've taken, but it's a lot going on. Thank you.
All right. Questions for City Manager Weinheimer, anyone? All right, Dan, thank you. Thanks very much. All right, on to the next item on our agenda, and this is council appointments, item six A. All right, as you might recall, the city of Newburgh was awarded sixty thousand dollars from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to work on updating its municipal code regulatory language on middle housing, which is defined as duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, cottage clusters and townhomes. Um, so if you will indulge me, I've got eight names of people that have volunteered to serve on this committee, which will run from August twenty twenty to June twenty twenty-one. They are Gabriel Skulek, Shai Montoya, Dominic Seymour, Melissa Daly, Robert Bonner, Leslie Murray, Irma Vera and, uh, Robert Moxley. So if you can indulge me with that, um, we will get these folks to volunteering. We don't need a motion, a, a thumbs ups would work if you're so inclined. All right, we got thumbs up, Elise. There it is. All right. So there you go. So we've got it unanimously. All right. And then now on to item six B. This is appointment of a city councillor to District Four, um, which will run from September eighth, when the person is, um, sworn in until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. Um, for those who might be listening at home, we had the interviews with four candidates, um, during our work session this evening. And again, as I said to them, and I will say again, we were delighted with the turnout, with the qualifications of the people that have chosen or are willing to serve. Um, and again, um, they are, uh, Robert Bonner, um, Dave Brown, Bryce Cofield and Greg Minahan. Um, so anyway, to all of those gentlemen, thank you. Thank you so much. So let's, uh, let's open the discussion regarding, uh, appointment of councillor to District Four. Anyone who would like to lead off, feel free.
I will, Mr. Mayor. Um, so a very hard decision. Every, I went through all the information, looked at all the, the stuff that was in our packet. Um, I also want to say that I got many, many emails about this appointment and I read them all very carefully and I will not reply to all of them because there were so many of them, but I want people to know that I did read them all. Um, and I also would like to thank all of these candidates because it really does take a commitment to do a volunteer position like this. And I feel like all four of the candidates really understand what that means. And so, um, I'm very thankful about that. And, um, given all the information that I've gone over, I would actually like to make a motion, um, right now to appoint Bryce Cofield to feel that, fill the District Four seat.
Second.
Okay, um, and Jill, with a second. All right, before we go, um, I should, I should mention that we do have, uh, both public comments that I'm going to read now, um, regarding the appointment. And as mentioned, as we mentioned again, um, I believe we did receive quite a number, and Sue can verify these numbers. We did receive quite a number of emails, um, in support of Greg Minahan, uh, Dave Brown and, uh, Bryce Cofield. Um, so, um, public, you, you are being heard and, uh, and hopefully we responded in some way to most of you. Um, all right. And, uh, I think it was requested, Sue, that I read this, this letter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So to clarify for the record, you received forty emails in support of Bryce Cofield. You received, uh, two in support of Greg Minahan. And then you have this submitted testimony by Lydia Schramm, who has to be read aloud.
Right. And I, and I believe there was also a note of support on the website, uh, for Dave Brown. But, um, all right. So if you could indulge me, here is the letter again from Lydia Schramm. To the Newburgh City Council members regarding the open District Four spot. Thank you for taking time to consider my concern as you work to fill the vacant District Four seat for council. I'm writing today, today to voice my concern of the applicant Dave Brown for the, this position. While Mr. Brown has been a longtime member of our community, I'm concerned about his recent public statements regarding racial issues. Mr. Brown appears to be unwilling to listen to the growing unrest and discontent regarding racial inequities and injustice. I recognize that he believes he has never personally perpetuated racial inequities in his career or personal life. I further recognize, however, his continued disbelief that there are things in our city that are not just inequitable for all our residents. He is either blithely ignorant of this issue or sees nothing wrong. In either case, Mr. Brown has demonstrated an unwillingness to seek avenues to learn and grow in his understanding of racial inequities in our community at this time. I therefore believe Mr. Brown is not the correct choice for city council. We need a council member that is willing to listen to all our neighbors and willing to learn and grow with our whole community. It is my hope that the council will seek to have diverse voices of influence that better reflect the needs of our entire community. When planning for a birth future, it is my hope that the council is seeking ways to encourage families from diverse backgrounds to settle in our city, to feel self-welcome in our community and believe that this is a council that will listen, reflect and change. Thank you for your time and consideration, Lydia Schramm. Okay. Um, so I believe that is the public record that we, or the public comment that we've received to date. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Further discussion, folks. Anyone comments, anyone?
Hi.
Sir, fire away.
I just really wanted to say thank you to everyone. Um, each applicant was super thoughtful and like Stephanie said, I was super taken away by how many, uh, comments we had in our email box. So I was really refreshing to see how many people support all of these candidates. And although I may not be completely in alignment with each person that, um, applied, I just commend the, um, work that each person is doing in the community. And I couldn't agree more that all of us need to be at the table to have difficult conversations if we really want to have sustainable change within our community. And that really does, um, need to include every side of the aisle. So although my vote today will be in support of, um, Bryce Cofield, I do really want to continue those conversations with, um, all parties involved.
Anyone else?
Yeah, um, I would just also like to say thank you, you know, being the most recent appointed, uh, person on the council. I know what it's like to be there in person. I would have liked a Zoom as well, but I'm just, I'm teasing you all. Um, thank you all for taking your time to do this. And I'm really, really excited also, um, to see, you know, the skills that each of you have. I think that's one thing I really learned about being in council, that we don't always agree or see eye to eye on everything, but I think that if we're able to work as a body together, you know, and do what's best for, um, our community as a whole. And I'm just saying I will be supporting Bryce. I'm really excited for this. And I think that this is, I'm really, really excited to have you here because I think that your, uh, experience and just how open you are, I think will be refreshing to the city of Newburgh.
Um, anyone else? All right.
All the good stuff's been said, so. No, I said all the good stuff's been said, so.
Um, you know, I'd, I'd like to just, just mention one or two things. And I think maybe this is a bit reflective on the community we live in. Um, so, and, and this isn't meant in any other way except to, to show, I guess, the deep interconnectedness that we all have. Um, so Robert Bonner, as he mentioned in full disclosure, was a member of the Habitat for Humanity Board where I work. He currently volunteers at, um, Habitat for Humanity's Restore. Um, Dave Brown, as he mentioned during the work session, he and I have coached together, or at least been coaches on the staff at Newburgh High School for a number of years. In looking at Greg Minahan's, um, curriculum vitae, I realized that he and I both worked for the same nonprofit at different times in Portland with child aid. And Bryce, I've had the good fortune of being a part of programs that he put on and participated in, um, in Newburgh. So, um, you know, it just, again, it, it makes me reflect how interconnected we are, but also how much talent we have in this, in this community. Um, so I, I just can't thank you enough. Uh, again, all of the applicants, um, I hope you will take us up on one of these offers of another position. Uh, Greg, not too much pressure. If it doesn't go your way tonight, the Budget Committee does have a position and you honed right in on the numbers. I'll mention that, just, just to let, just to say no pressure. Um, but otherwise, um, any other comments, folks? All right then, let's, uh, let's call for the vote then. Um, all in favor of the motion as president on the table for appointing Bryce Cofield to District Four City Councillor, signify by saying aye.
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 Say yes, sounds about a thumb, so we all see it. There it is. There it is. There we go. All right. Uh, Bryce, welcome to the city council. Uh, we are very happy to have you swearing in. We'll be on September eighth. Um, and I understand Municipal Court Judge Larry Blake will be there. Um, Greg and all of the applicants, thank you so very much. Um, please stay involved, please. Um, we, we really, we really are delighted with all of your experience and, and please do stay involved. So thank you. All right. All right. Um, now, let's see, moving on, we, public comments. Sue, do we have any public comments waiting in the queue? Can't hear you, Sue.
Um, yes, we have Mr. Lamb. Let me unmute him.
Right. And then we'll, sorry, we'll come back for issue tracker if there's any issues to track.
Okay.
Or waving no, no issues. Okay. We like that.
Mr. Lamb, are you there? Okay. So I unmuted the phone number that belongs to him, but I'm not hearing him.
All right. All right, Kelvin, are you there by chance?
Oh, here he is. Sorry.
No worries.
Okay.
All right, Stephanie, would you, would you time this again? Or I can do it this time. Yeah. So five minutes would be great. Thanks.
Okay, you there?
There we are. Kelvin, I think we hear you.
Excellent.
All right. You are, you are on speaker. We can hear you and you've got five minutes. And I think you brought something up on the screen, correct?
I'm working on it.
Yeah, a couple of documents this year. So greetings to Mary Rogers and council. I'm, I'm Kelvin Lamb, homeowner in the Green subdivision. Can I present an issue with concerns about the continued, continued use of a land developer at your July twentieth council meeting? So let me recap that just briefly. I encountered sewer line issues. Unfortunately, it was one of the, I think, what, what caused the issue was these flushable wipes that your city manager was talking about. I had a guest in the house, but I encountered a blockage in my sooner, or in my sewer and, uh, had a video taken and it showed that the sewer line was crushed. I reached out the various, uh, I reached out to various potential groups that could have caused it, and a bunch of finger pointing took place, and, and I actually received a document from the land developer, said, oh, it can't be us at all because we only go down three to four feet. And that's one of the documents I showed you is something they, they sent to me, and the notes I read are from me. So with that, I decided, well, let's excavate it, nothing to point, let's dig down and see what's down there. Unfortunately, it's near power vaults and, and gas lines and all kinds of stuff, so it's expensive opportunity to get to this. So in any case, we exposed that excavated that, and you have a picture of what was, that's the document showing there. The next one, that's the picture, kind of in the bottom left from that red is actually another crack in, in the sewer, so it looked like it may have been clipped. And then you've got three dry utility lines sitting on top of my sewer, and I don't see any rocks, must be crushed rock between the two. But bottom line is, that's, that's what I'm looking at. And so the obvious question is, how did the conduits and the sewer line even touch if there should have been anywhere from twelve to twenty-four inches? Somebody messed up someplace. So I see there being three problems. Number one, the developer did not correct the problem at the time the damage took place. So don't know if that was intentional or not, but they laid it on top of my sewer, they maybe even clipped it with, with tobacco at the time. Number two, your city staff did not inspect it properly to notice the damage and require a repair. Not good. And number three, the developer did not submit the required ASBILs when other utilities were encountered by the city's design standards. And that was a verbiage of that other document, that anytime something happens and they encounter other, other utilities, they're supposed to, to let the city know that. So, but my, my challenge here is that this was done in 2006, and I purchased my home in 2008, and the developers kind of said, well, so sad, too bad, you know, it's past the, the timeframe for that, so, you know, again, so sad, too bad. I asked the city attorney, Attorney Stone, you know, and we exchanged some information about sixteen months or so ago, and I asked him, at that time, the city stated that it's too old, you haven't kept any documentation for this. And I said, well, what about the ASBILs? If there was something changed, wouldn't you need to keep those on record forever? And he goes, well, that's a good question, but nobody at City Hall's ever ran across that, and I've never run across it myself. So we're at this quiet mire here, is I've got a problem, broken, broken sewer lines, and I can't get them fixed. So I reported last meeting that there was, my next door neighbor experienced the exact same problem about three, four years ago. There's another neighbor across the way from me that had some sewer lines, cost for eleven thousand dollars because of the location of it. And guess what? Just this last peak week, my neighbor across the street had a sewer problem, had a pooling issue. So that's one, two, three, four issues in this subdivision. Don't you think maybe there might be a problem here, and we just don't know how big of a problem it is? So why would anyone, here's a question, why would anyone not be concerned that the same land developer is being used and may be causing future problems in other developments? That would be a question I would ask. So I'm disappointed that since the council meeting on July twentieth, I've not received a phone call or email from either the city manager or city attorney. I would have expected or thought, you know, a month going by, somebody would have reached out to me. And also, this is a project management question, but you have a, an issue tracker, council issue tracker, how do you get on that list? I would think this would be something that would be tracked, but maybe it doesn't, isn't elevated to that point, but I just, I was kind of expecting it there. So anyway, that's my spiel, so thank you for your time, and hopefully some consideration, and even followed up by some action.
All right, thank you, Kelvin. You know, I will say that we, we, being the city attorney, the city manager, and I did discuss this somewhat, this issue this afternoon. You know, as you did point out, there's a number of players that are involved with the, with the development and with the, you know, oversight of it. What I think, and I will try to paraphrase, but, and please, Dan or Truman jump in if I get off track here. But basically, Kelvin, if you believe that you, that you have a claim, a valid claim against the city, I would recommend that you, you submit that to our city attorney, and then we can, we can take it from there. Alternatively, I, obviously, we cannot give legal advice, but if you believe that you have a claim against the developer, or whoever installed the pipe, that might be another avenue to pursue. Dan or Truman, did you want to add anything?
I don't have anything to add to that. I mean, I would just comment on the communication side of it, you know, that there was no, I guess, no direction and no clarity from my perspective from the last presentation, that that was expected, or, or, you know, that that was something that City Council wanted us to do. So if I missed that signal, I apologize, but, you know, one of those things that, you know, didn't seem like there was a direction or resolution.
You know, and one thing I will say, say, Kelvin, is I certainly do, I feel for you, given the circumstance, given what your neighbors are, are experiencing. And like I say, if you feel that there's legal remedies, please, please do send that to, to City Attorney Stone. All right, anything?
Okay, he's, he's worked for me in the past and been very helpful, but I just kind of stuck, we're at a point, probably is a legal recourse at this point in time. I'm not pointing so much at the city, I'm just concerned twofold, is I'd like the developer to fix my problem, number two, to continue to use the developer elsewhere, I already stated that, I'm just fearful that we're moving a problem to another development, you can have more calls like this five, six, ten years down the road.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much, Kelvin.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, let's move on, we're now on to item eight, public hearings. And this is a legislative public hearing ordinance 2020-2865, declaring that blighted areas exist within the city of Newburgh, recognizing the need for an urban renewal agency, the function in the city of Newburgh, providing for the exercise of the agency's powers by the City Council of the city of Newburgh, and correcting section 2.40, urban renewal agency in the Newburgh municipal code. I will remind you that this is indeed a legislative hearing, so we've got the possibility of the waving and the second reading, and a roll call vote, we require four to pass on this item. Mr. Rux, and I see Mr. Bridges as well, good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the ongoing journey about the discussion on urban renewal. As listed in your staff report, we hired Elaine Howard back in December of 2019. Council appointed a citizens advisory committee, and Mr. Bridges is the chair of that particular committee. We've had six meetings from January through July. And in July twentieth, I should say, or on July twentieth, we brought forward to you a feasibility study with a recommendation from the committee to accept that feasibility study. On July twentieth, council did pass the resolution, accepting that, and in that recommendation, it also included establishing an urban renewal agency. So I put in your report, there are three different ways that an agency can be created and function. One is through a housing authority, which we do not have locally, we have a countywide housing authority. It could be a board of commissioners composed of less than three members, or it can be the governing body. And so the recommendation from staff is that the City Council would act as the urban renewal agency. Right, at this point in time, there's not a fiscal impact, you may remember in presentations that we provided to you, we have, funds have been allocated out of Fund 14 to do the feasibility study and prepare the plan and report. If the council passes this ordinance this evening, I've talked with Elaine Howard, and we would begin the process in October of preparing a plan and report. It will take about six to eight months or so to go through that particular process. I think it's important to note that when we presented the feasibility study, we outlined a list of projects. We also outlined four options for a growth rate. At the feasibility stage, we did not have to identify the growth rate, but the council has seen that, the committee has seen it, the planning commission. So one of the first tasks of the citizens committee would be to identify that particular growth rate. On the project list front, there's a long list of capital improvements that are there. That list would have to be winnowed down. You may remember, we were in the hundred and seventeen million dollar range, depending on the growth rate, you may be looking at a current value of project somewhere around forty to fifty-three million dollars. And so there's a winnowing process that the committee would have to go through, feedback from the planning commission, and of course, the policy consideration by the City Council. At this point, staff was recommending the council adopt ordinance 2020-2865. Mr. Bridges, you have any additional comments?
I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that one of the aspects of the ordinance is that you have to make a finding that there's a blighted area. And I always worry about that term and want to make sure that people understand that that term is a really broad term. I think of it sometimes as being an area that has opportunities. You know, you look at the mill site, you can clearly think that that's a blighted situation. But then when we have the downtown, you know, people might go, well, hold on, your building's downtown and it functions just fine. It, it's, a lot of buildings downtown don't function very well, there's lots of infrastructure that doesn't function very well. Typically, every two to three years, my office floods, and that's a extension of the storm sewer system being underdeveloped, and I know that's being worked on, but that's just an example of a real world problem. But the bigger things are things like, what can we do to help businesses do better? Can we do better technological infrastructure? Those are the things that are really much broader than just a mill site that's having So I don't know if that helps or answers any questions about that term.
Let's see, one thing I should ask for before we go further down the discussion is conflict of interest abstentions on this, anyone?
I might have, I might have one, since I do live, like, right up against the mill property, but that could have a, you know, that could have a negative or a positive to my property value, but I never plan on selling my house either, so. Who knows what the conflict may be or may not be.
Right, and me, I actually live between the two legs of the straddle, so I'm not actually in the district, but I am between it on the south side of town. Anyone else? All right, questions of staff or Mr. Bridges, anyone? Okay, all right, I, I sent out an email this afternoon, I think I sent it to some of you, and this is, this is where I got to get on the soapbox a little bit, so you're going to have to hear it, I'm sorry. But here goes. Urban renewal does not have the best history. Urban renewal actually caused a lot of displacement in its early years in the sixties and seventies. I could argue that that, while it was largely resolved, it has not always completely been resolved. As Mr. Bridges mentioned, the word blight can be concerning or offensive even to people who live in that particular area. My hope is that, you know, and again, to be honest with you, and I seem to be on this theme tonight, I apologize for it, but if you look back at examples of federal programs that have furthered systemic inequality, one of the top ones is urban renewal. Now, I know times have changed, I understand organizers have made changes to this, but the only reason I'm cautioning on this is that with the improvements in infrastructure, whether on Blaine, on River, or downtown, we have, we face the very real possibility of gentrification in that area. I'd also mention that that area happens to be the largest concentration of low-income households and people of color in our community. So I just feel that I needed to state that, I know that we will do a bang-up job making sure that does not happen, but I felt that I at least needed to enter it into the record, so.
And, and I agree, Rick, and I think what we have to also remember is that this is a long-term project, and none of us will be here for the whole thing. So the protections, the thought behind it, all of that really needs to be taken into consideration because you don't know who's going to follow you, or what their beliefs are going to be. So that's always, you know, something I look at, like, how much danger, it's going to be okay while we're here, but what's it going to be like when we're gone? What, what are we opening the community to? So that, we always have to think about that.
Any other comments, folks? Any questions of staff, as I said, or John?
I, I agree with, with you and Denise, and I think it is incumbent on this council to make sure that we are good stewards of this, if it, if it, if we're going to go forward. And I think it's really important that we're very specific about how we're going to use this, and how we're going to use this to better the entire community, everybody who lives here, all residents, and not just a small few. So I definitely understand the concerns, and I, I believe it is up to us to make sure that we mitigate as much of that as we possibly can.
Other, other comments, folks? Okay, hearing none? How's about a motion, if you are so inclined? Have I, wait, let me make sure I haven't jumped across my...
Did Dan want to talk?
I think, I think you have some public comment, actually, but, no, it's okay.
Yeah, and so we've got, I know we had public comment from Patrick Johnson, and then is Robert Suppy on the line, Sue?
Let me see if he comes up. Robert, are you there? Let's try this one. Robert, are you there?
Now I am, yeah.
Sorry about that.
All right, good evening, Suppy. You, we are ready to hear your public comment, and you have...
Okay, thank you. Well, several things. You guys, you guys got my testimony earlier, I trust all of you have had a chance to read it and think about it. I'd like to emphasize a few things. Mr. Mayor, while your property is not in the actual area, how would you take it if you were told that your neighborhood was blighted? I, I don't think that's a good thing to be telling residents of Newburgh that live in fine residential neighborhoods such as yours. I'm out watering my, my plants tonight, you guys might have noticed it's kind of warm, and I look across the street, and tonight, if you guys go along with this, you're declaring all these nice, single-family residences across my street as being blighted, and I, I think that's a problem. As I put in my testimony, I think it's incumbent on every one of you to look at every block in the area you're calling blighted, and say which of the eight criteria that were cited apply to each block. I don't see how you can declare that in many of them. As I mentioned, I think you also need to look at the history of this. Newburgh, Newburgh doesn't have a good history of urban renewal areas, you know, to the mayor, you, you commented on federal issues with it. I would look at Newburgh issues with it. We did a really poor job before, and I think you're falling in the same trap this time, and do you really want this to go back to the voters to say, no, you can't take this money away? I also think you need to look at, as I mentioned, the last two budget cycles, this Budget Committee and this council were unable to do what twenty years of councils and budget committees before have been able to do, and that is balance the budget without raising property taxes. You're now taking some property taxes away. How, how are you going to deal with this? What is your plan? I don't think you can kick that can down the road, I think you need to be thinking about it now. And I don't see that, I don't see that you're going to get there. Anyway, you've got my written testimony, and, and that's, that's some stuff to add, and I thank you for giving it some consideration.
All right, but thank you, Mr. Suppy. All right, Sue, do we have any other public testimony?
No.
Okay, then I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. The recommendation from staff, please.
Mr. Mayor, staff recommends adopting ordinance number 2020-2865, declaring the blighted areas exist within the city of Newburgh, recognizing the need for urban renewal agency to function in the city of Newburgh, and providing for the exercise of the agency's powers by the City Council of the city of Newburgh.
All right, further deliberation, folks? All right. If someone would like to make a motion, that would be fantastic. Stephanie.
I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance number 2020-2865.
And waive the second reading?
And waive the second reading.
Do we have a second? And at least with a second, Sue. All right, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Truman.
Point of order to this being an ordinance. We do have the option of reading it by title only, but that would need to be included within the motion.
Okay.
I will amend the motion to include that.
All right. So waive the second reading, read by title only. All right, and we have, and at least seconds, the revised motion. Any further discussion? All right, a voice vote, please, Sue.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, Truman, again, and you've got me again.
Oh.
Are you ready for the reading of the ordinance title?
Oh, right, right. Yes, of course we are. Of course we are. By title only.
Ordinance number 2020-2865, an ordinance declaring the blighted areas exist within the city of Newburgh, recognizing the need for an urban renewal agency to function in the city of Newburgh and providing for the exercise of the agency's powers by the city council of the city of Newburgh and creating section 2.40, urban renewal agency in the Newburgh municipal code. That ends the reading.
All right, now the voice vote, please, Sue.
Councilor Nell Holloman?
Yes.
Councilor Martinez Plankarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
Mayor, motion passes five zero.
All righty. Well, thank you. And thank you, Doug, and thank you, John, for all your time on this. Thank you very much. All right, folks, it looks like it's about nine o'clock by my time. Do you want to take a five minute break before we start or do you want to push on? A thumbs up for break? Or we push on? Seeing no thumbs up, we're moving along. Item number nine A, economic opportunities analysis briefing. Mr. Rux?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to do a PowerPoint. You have your staff report. There was a PowerPoint within that, so I'm just going to give you a verbal update. So you can get through this and you can get home. I guess you're already all home, aren't you? Well, then Dan and I and Truman can go home. Hey. So the last meeting, and Sue, forgot about Sue. So pretty much, we got our, we got our military cots. The, so the last meeting of the EOA committee, we updated the buildable lands inventory based on information they provided. And so what we ended up with is we have 55 acres of vacant and partially vacant commercial land. That's and we have 24 acres of mixed use, vacant and partially vacant, and we've got 51 acres of industrial land. And in your packet, it breaks those down by different specific plan areas. You know, the riverfront, the north, Springbrook, specific plan, Springbrook District and so forth. So you can see all of the data that's there. So what it tells us is we've got 130, and Matt says he's here too. And so that tells us we've got 130 acres total of vacant and partially vacant land in our commercial industrial. We had another piece of information, a slide that was in there that broke this down by acreage and for each of those three categories. And then we looked at it a little bit differently and looked at the number of tax lots that made up that 130 acres. And the irony of it is only 35 lots make up that 130 acres of vacant land. So then the committee talked about the employment land component of this. And so we started with a base in 2018, we had 13,466 jobs in Newburgh. Because of the pandemic, we had a lot of conversations about, well, should there be a discount on the employment? Because it's not the same as it was in 2018, we talked with the employment department and we did a discount rate of 10% on that employment. And actually, if you look at the June unemployment numbers for Yamhill County, it's 9.7%. And the employment department thought that was a reasonable approach. So then we talked about, there's two provisions in the administrative rule on safe harbors. One is using the Portland State University population numbers and the other one is using employment numbers. And when you use the employment numbers, you look at the region. So you're looking at Yamhill, Polk, Marion and Lynn County, much bigger geography. And so your numbers can get skewed towards those larger communities like Salem. So the committee talked about looking at the PSU number because that's specific for Newburgh based upon the PSU forecast. And they had one meeting where we looked at a rate of 1.73%. We knew that was going to go down with the PSU number that came out at the end of June, and it did. It went down to 1.39. Using that 1.39 number, it means over the next 20 years, that's 2021 to 2041, is we're projecting additional 3,844 employees. That would be a 32% growth over that 20-year period. We kind of then continued to break things down and looked at where we're at in 2021. We're in 2020, but we're moving to 2021. And 25% of our employment base was in industrial, 11 in retail, commercial, 57% in office and commercial, and government was 7%. And here's where in this process, we get to be a little bit aspirational. And so the committee had talked about moving towards a 35% on our industrial. Historically, if you went back past 2008, 35% of our employment was actually in industrial. And so they came up with numbers that are in your report of 35% for industrial, nine for retail, 50% for office and government. In those last three categories, it's actually a percentage, it's a reduction in the percentage overall. Part of the retail piece of it comes from more people are buying things online. So e-commerce is, does affect the bricks and mortar, and bricks and mortar gets more and more expensive. We drilled down even further and looked at the number of employees per acre. And where we came up with retail was 16 employees per acre and office commercial was 22. And in that process, we took out and discounted out the public rights of way, which accounted for 19%. All of this led to an interesting number. And that number says that we have a surplus over the next 20 years of commercial, and that's commercial in our mixed employment area of 20 acres. So we don't have a need for additional commercial land today. I can say within a couple of years, that number will change. Crestview Crossing will change the numbers. That's already approved project, but it's still considered undeveloped land. But there be 20 acres of that that will be built out for housing and for commercial development. So the community will need to think about that in a few years. Might you need to do another economic opportunities analysis or maybe five years from now? Site needs, I think I've shared with you before, we went back and started with the 2016 economic development strategy. We updated that in 2019 as part of the community visioning program. And we had a list of targeted areas. As we talked through with the consultant and with Sedcor, we actually collapsed those down and to make it a little more simpler. And so we categorize them as advanced and general manufacturing, technology and high tech. So again, we collapse technology and high tech into one category. Food and beverage and agriculture, we collapse those down into one category. Forestry and wood products, and then of course aviation, which relates back to Sportsman's Air Park. In your packet, there's a location quotient. I always like these diagrams, kind of, kind of tells you, gives you a snapshot of where you're at in your community. And where we were at is if you have an LQ of greater than one on that graph and you were in the upper right-hand corner, that means you're very strong and you're growing in that, that sector. If you were to the right and lower, you're strong, but you've got some declining. And what was interesting, the data came out and says, we're really strong in accommodation and food services and healthcare and social services. We're strong and growing. Our manufacturing is strong, but we've had some declines. Part of that is we've lost companies. We're losing companies and we don't have an industrial land base. And I'll get to that later. But then we have the categories of those sectors that were weak, but were growing. And that includes things like utilities, natural resources, wholesale, trade, real estate, professional services. What was interesting about this LQ graph is that we had no sectors that were weak and declining, which kind of caught me off guard. But that was an interesting graph. That's something if you might want to look back and pay some attention to. I've shared with you before, the Infrastructure Finance Authority has a, a table from 2015. It tells you about all the different variables for these different industry sectors and what some of their attributes are. So it talks about acreage, if it's rail service, slope, what kind of sewer water service, what kind of specialty utilities do those particular sectors need? We took that then, and we took our categories and we created a graph to show how we kind of compare with that. And it's pretty, it came up what we, I kind of thought it would be. You know, on our advanced and general manufacturing, it fits in with high tech, advanced manufacturing and general manufacturing and industrial parks. Food and beverages is food processing, advanced manufacturing, a local warehouse needs. Another one was in the tech and high tech. You know, it's high tech, you've got advanced manufacturing, you've got industrial parks, but then you've got some of these very specialized uses. And then we broke that down again, kind of referencing off the IFA chart about some of the site characteristics and needs that are necessary out there. So we went a little further and drilled down and started looking at demand. And so with this one, I had the consultants go and look at other communities in the Willamette Valley. So we looked at Albany, Corvallis, McMinnville, Sherwood, Twalton, Wilsonville, Newburgh, Salem and Woodburn. And this was all to look at based upon these industry categories, what were their site needs like in these other communities? And the consultant was able to get data from the employment department and break that all down. And then we broke that down even further and started looking at the site size that is needed by these different industry sectors. So we looked at it in one way by looking at the number of employees in each community. And Newburgh's a little bit on the lower end, some of the larger communities or different communities. Twalton had a very large employment base. So did Wilsonville, so did Salem, different sized cities. And then we broke that down and looked at it by parcel size. So we had less than five acres, five to 25, 25 to 50 and 50 plus. We looked at it then another way, looking at the acres of land need. And on that particular graph, what kind of stands out is the purple areas, and those are sites that are larger than 50 acres in size. And so in Corvallis, you've got Techtronics and the tech campus that they have there. Newburgh, we have a big kind of purple area as well. That's the mill site. Because it's larger than 50 acres. And then Woodburn out on I-5 and some of their warehouse and distribution. Then we moved on and started to look at these site characteristics and breaking them down into acreage ranges and looking at the percent of employment and the number of employees per particular site. So the data showed us that less than five acres, this regional look is that that's where 51% of your industrial employment was. On sites that were five to 25 acres, it was 41%. When you got to the larger sites, 25 to 50 and 50 and above, it was only 4% of your employment. Interesting enough is that if you're less than a five acre site, you've got about 15 employees per site. Five to 25, you've got 133. And 25 to 50, you've got 128. Another key piece of this is when we looked at it regionally is that the average site size, and this is based on acres, if you are under the five acre range, it's, actually, it's one acre. If you're in the five to 25, it's 9.9, and 25 to 50 is 32.7. And if you had sites that are 50 or more, they were in that 92 acre range. We continue to kind of drill that down and look specifically at Newburgh. And based on our new employment and the modeling showed that for less than five acres, 46% of our new employment would be in that category. Five to 25 would be 41, and the higher categories came out to about 13%. And then we started to break that down then based upon the employees per acre to look at what our acreage was. And where we ended up with all of this is that we have a deficit of sites less than five acre and the acres we would need are 51 in the category of five to 25, 69 acres. 25 to 50 acres, 33 acres and 50 or more is 92 acres. So that came up to a two, a total of 246 acres. We're deficient in our industrial land base based upon our population projection over the course of the next 20 years. From there, the consultants kind of shared with the committee that, you know, we got enough commercial, we're deficient in our industrial. And so our next steps will be, the consultant will be coming back with a draft of the economic opportunities analysis, and that will be early October. We already have the meeting scheduled. We'll talk through that EOA document. And then we'll also start the discussions with the committee on strategies. The consultant team and I have met, we've talked about some different things. They're doing some additional background research. There are a couple of more meetings of the CAC, Citizens Advisory Committee. We will also do some kind of virtual online open house in later October. So we have a meeting in early October, a virtual online open house later in October. And then the committee will come back for their final meeting in November of 2020. That's kind of the update, more work to do. This gives you a snapshot of where we're at.
Awesome. Questions for Doug, anyone? So you know, Doug, I do have one question. So you said a deficit of 246 acres in industrial. If and when the, the mill site is annexed in, will that change that number at all?
Yeah, good question. Committee members asked that as well. Yes, it could. We'll look, as we get into reviewing the EOA, we'll look at the mill site as a redevelopment site. And so that 246, and hypothetically, they're not the correct numbers yet because we're still analyzing those. But let's say you took 100 acres out of that. Right now, the mill's categorized as developed. But if you redevelop, it might meet some of your five to 25 acre sites. And so that could adjust the number. So if you took kind of a, a reasonable worst case, take 100 acres out, that might say that you're 146 acres shy in your industrial land base.
Thank you. Any other questions for Doug? All right, Doug, thank you so much. Thank you for pushing on with that.
You're welcome.
All right, item nine B, resolution 2020-3695. Now, if you recall, this is the extension of the emergency, local state of emergency. Again, this is mainly, if I recall correctly, this is mainly for functioning at the city under an emergency declaration. We've been renewing it every two weeks. And the thought last meeting was that we extend that time. So and Truman has put together this resolution. So any thoughts on this, folks? I don't know that the resolution actually calls for anything specific, does it, Truman? Are you leaving that up to us?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could just remind the council of kind of how we got to where we are today. So in back, way back in March, which feels like five years ago or so, the, according to the city's adopted emergency plan, the mayor declared an emergency, which was in line with what the governor and the president had done. The council then ratified the mayor's emergency declaration by resolution. That initial declaration was extended in May. So I just had the date and I've lost it. May 13th. And through that May 13th resolution, the council delegated to the mayor the ability to extend the emergency declaration in two week increments. And here we are with a current declaration through August 19th. We discussed this at the last council meeting. The council asked that we come back with a longer declaration with the ability for the mayor to extend it in monthly chunks of through, essentially through November. So this would go through September and then the mayor could renew again in October or November. And if I could just summarize what the emergency declaration actually does and what it doesn't do, and partly for the benefit of the council, but also for the benefit of those folks listening in. The emergency declaration really is. The emergency declaration really is directed at city operations, internal operations. It's not imposing any kind of conditions on the community. Those of all come either through the county or through the state. So, just in broad terms, the emergency declaration allows the city manager to enter into emergency contracts with an expedited contracting method. It allows, allows us to have Zoom, electronic council and committee meetings, which we're all enjoying so much. It allows the city manager to put into place emergency workplace rules, which have included, as he reported in his city manager's report, some telework policies that we've implemented, and also some internal operations about distancing within the office and alternating work schedules, things like that. It allowed the city manager as an emergency manager to minimize the impact of the emergency, which was done through some initial community grant programs that we had. And it also allows the city to request assistance from the county and/or state to help mitigate the emergency. And that's really what the, this emergency declaration does. But this current renewal is, is in recognition that the pandemic does now look like it's going to abate in the next two weeks. And it's kind of saves the mayor from having, it saves staff from having to prepare these on a, you know, biweekly basis and the mayor to sign them. So that's the effect of the resolution.
And any other questions, folks? Alright, I will entertain a motion then.
I guess I'll do it.
You do it.
I'll do it. Mayor, I'd like to make, well, just, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we extend the declaration of our state of emergency by monthly, that you get to declare the monthly, and it will, for three months. How's that? It's not written for me. I had to make that up myself, and it's too late for me to do that kind of stuff.
We have a second.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor signify by thumbs up. And we got thumbs up all around. That, that passes, Sue. Alright, on to item.
I don't, I don't mean to be a stickler about this, but this was actually a resolution. And so the resolution itself should be, be considered and if approved, adopted.
Do you want me to read the whole thing here, then?
We could just move to.
Adopt Resolution 2023-695.
Right.
Awesome. I didn't have to go through all that work after all.
I didn't want to interrupt you. I thought you were getting there eventually.
Yeah, sorry. Alright, so, yeah, sorry. I didn't see the terms in the resolution itself. So that's, I was also looking for clarification that Denise provided. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, who's the second? I didn't catch that.
Elise.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, all in favor signify by thumbs up. There we go. We got it. Unanimous, Sue. Alright, moving on to council business, council committee reports. Anything to report out, folks?
I have something just real quick. This is not a committee, but I participated in it. I know Elise did, too, through Newburgh Sustainable Solutions on Saturday, cleanup of our city in conjunction with the SOLV. And lots of people came out. It was really, really hot. We all melted, but we got a little over 20 pounds of garbage picked up from around the city. So thank you to Sustainable Solutions. That was awesome.
Yep, and I'm, yeah, I didn't see you guys. Where were you guys? I was at, I was at Ewing Young. So we were down there at the park.
I was downtown.
I was at Hoover, which provided a learning experience for my children and Sharps.
Hoover is a place to, that's a learning experience indeed, Hoover.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else anybody wants to report out? Alright, well, Elise, there we go.
Sorry. We had visit slash.
Yep, looks like we lost your.
I attended visit slash taste Newburgh this week, and you all got an update. So I won't go into details, but they're working really hard to refine their strategy in these crazy times.
Alright, anyone else? Actually, Elise and I are working on community court. That's been going on. So that's a new initiative, which is pretty exciting. The Equity Task Force has been meeting, and will meet again in September. Community partner calls are every other week. Those continue here through COVID. And, and I'm doing weekly videos that, I haven't run out of things to say yet, amazingly enough, but I will, I'm sure, at some point. So, anyway, anything else? Alright, I've got a reminder here from Sue,